One.
Yeah.
We're good.
We're good.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you and call the February 11, 2025 by council meeting to order at 5:30 PM. I'd like to call Deputy Mayor Morekki for the land acknowledgement, please.
I would like to acknowledge that the rural municipality of St Andrews is located on 31, territory, the traditional lands of the Nishanabi, pre OG, pre Dakota, Denny people, and the national homeland of the Red River Maki. We respect this spirit and the intent for treaty and treaty making and remain committed to working in partnership with First Nations, Inuit, and Maki people in the spirit of truth, reconciliation, and collaboration.
Thank you. Next item three, adoption of the agenda. We have resolved that council adopt the agenda as amended with the addition of the following items. 8.0, approval of accounts. 8.2, February 10, 2025, check detail report and demand. Under 10 correspondence for action. 10.6, our meeting in Stonewall on March 13. And 10.7, in Shu Lake School Division. Virginal public budget meeting. And under in camera, item 14, airport board lease renewal addendum. Are there any other additions? Uh, can I have a mover, please? Counselor Dornbach, seconded, Counselor Slaker. Any further comments? All in figure.
Hi.
Karen, that is Karen. Now we'll start with the planning portion of our meeting. I'd like to welcome you all to the planning portion. The hearing will proceed as follows. The RRPD staff, Ms. Valentino Esben, our planner is here. She will present the application. The applicant will make a presentation on the application. Those registered in support will make a presentation. Opposed will then make a presentation. The applicant will then have the opportunity to respond to comments or concerns raised by council or presenters. At the end of each presentation, council may ask for clarification but will not enter into debate. All persons speaking must address the chair. At the end of the presentations, council will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, there will be no more presentations accepted on the matter. Council will then consider each matter separately and provide a decision. So thank you. We'll now proceed. We have resolved that council hereby open the public hearings for the following planning applications. Scheduled for February 11, 2025 at 5:30. Conditionally use 372024. Conditionally use 12025. Conditionally use 22025. Division application number S243083. Could I have a mover, please? Deputy Mayor Morekki, seconded by Counselor Peoplecorn. All in favor? Very. First item is conditional use number 372024, Proud Road. Madam Planner, could you please proceed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay. Am I heard? Lady, can you hear me?
Can hear you, yeah. Just make sure to share the screen.
Yeah. I'm mute, I'm muted, so I need to. It's okay that I'm muted?
It's okay that you're muted, yeah.
Okay, so I'm sharing?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is a conditional use application number CU372024 on Proud Road. And the purpose of that application is to establish an agriculture and industrial use in AAD Agriculture General Zone. By the zoning by law of St Andrews, agriculture industrial permitted conditionally. So if the proposition is to establish small heavy-duty repair company for trucks and other foreign vehicles. Here we can see the ARAM application of the subject property. And this is a site plan of the applicant that been provided. And conditions of approval should council wish to approve this application, RRPD recommends the following conditions. This conditional use is limited to what has been represented. Any other changes will require new conditional use approval. An applicant owner shall maintain the site and surrounding area in an orderly fashion, so it does not become unsightly. Vehicle and equipment parking must remain on the subject property. No parking shall be permitted on any other streets. Um, storage of equipment and material must be primarily located within the existing buildings. Oh, just a second. Um, where interior storage is not feasible, exterior storage must be located away from residential dwellings and immediate street view. Um, their external stor- exterior storage is deemed unsightly and cannot be accommodated with a shop building. The installation of the privacy fence shall be required. Use of property must be, must adhere to the municipality's noise by law. And business license shall be required for each businesses entity operating on the subject property. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions of the planner? Then Wesley Holich, you're the applicant. Do you wish to speak to your application? Yes. Do you have anything to add?
Anyone has any questions? Be straightforward, just a handy repair shop is not really one in the area. Obviously, the business license allows us to get occupancy permits. Get proper insurance and liability coverage that have mechanic over there. Generation farmer, last name is Pluke, been there for a while. I'm just trying to find other ways to make some extra money to, or to be able to farm. Like right now, I'm taking my stuff for safeties or purposes. Get a safety shop, run for some of these trucks that can be able to deal with my own stuff. Right into some mountain now to do safeties. Lot more local farmers in the area that are traveling far too, so it's, there's a need for it, it's just. When, uh, getting a little bit faster, make sure it's not probably.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions of the applicant? Go ahead, Counselor Dornbach.
If this goes through, what is your plan for any, like environmental disposal such as your oil, diesel, hydraulic? You have a tank that you'd get, put that in, picked up?
Yeah, like, I mean, obviously, the town of, uh, Donar had your dump that's just down the road. Got the tanks for stuff and such there. Um, up to. Spilling too much, right? Like that, but that was.
If you remember.
Yes, uh, how many employees would you be looking at?
One, two, but that's it.
Sounds like it's pretty much going to be a one-man operation, though.
Well, I, if you're not counting myself, you have one, two full-time mechanics who are reoccupating a previous shop that was started. One, at C, um, obviously, keep it, keep it simple. I'm not a mechanic, but I trade, so.
Any further question?
I just have a comment.
Go ahead, Counselor.
I'd just like to point out the Google Earth map. You can see there where the subject's property is. Um, you know, the family of farmers across the road, and there's no other residents that live on Pluke Road or on Pro Road, so. Um, it ain't going to be affected, you know, no one's going to be affected by traffic and that kind of stuff, so. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next item, conditionally use number 1-2025, 803 Fort Gary Road. Madam Planner, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, so this is a conditional use application, CU12025 on 803 Fort Gary Road. And the purpose of that application is to establish a commercial recreation facility, which includes licensed wedding venue in a AAD Agriculture General Zone. In AAD, recreation commercial is permitted conditionally as it proposed licensed wedding venue and familiar fence. Here we can see our location map of the pro-subject property. And some site plan from the applicant with the parkings and dimensions of the buildings. Okay, should, uh, conditions of approval, should council wish to approve this application, RRPD recommends the following conditions. These conditions, you, this conditional use is limited to what has been presented. Any other changes will require new conditional use approval. Hours of operation shall be limited from 12:00 PM to 11:00 PM Saturdays and Sundays only. All signage must comply with municipality's zoning by law. Use of the property must comply with the municipality's noise by law, too. Vehicles parking must be contained onsite as per submitted site plan and adhere to the parking requirements of the municipality's zonings by law. Applic- applicant, um, to obtain any annual business license from ARAM. And no occupancy or use of structures can be preceded until such time as all required permits are successfully obtained from RRPD and RM of St Andrews. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Counsel members, do you have any questions for the planner? Uh, Counselor Peoplecorn?
Uh, in terms of the, uh, traffic, is there able to add a, a conditional use that would talk about the traffic considerations for the intersection of 8 and 67? I know we have a, um, uh, study currently with the province that's looking at that intersection.
That would be provincial, that wouldn't be upon the applicant.
But we couldn't add that as, like, through RRPD to have a, that traffic be looked at, um, on this application?
Yeah, it is possible to add it. You'll have to write exact. Showing over it and any details that you're thinking about, like, from the study, you mean, or?
I, I'm, I'm just trying to think about the traffic on that, on that highway there.
Hmm. Well, 67 is number of different provincial highways. It wouldn't be up to a municipal register to look at provincial traffic.
Yeah, they're supposed to require those things, and we haven't got, I don't think that we've got any.
There's nothing from, uh, transport or any rupture about any. They don't have any concerns, like, was that ever brought to their attention?
For sure, it was brought, but let me see if we have any responses from them. No, I don't think we've got something. No. Why not?
No. Okay, Counselor Peoplecorn, anything, please?
Um, not, not at this point.
Any other members have, uh, council members have questions of the planner? Hey, is the applicant here to speak to the application? Would you like to come to the microphone? Then people can hear you if you come to the microphone, please. Okay, it's not checked off on here. Did you sign the sheet?
I didn't know I had to, because it was.
Oh, okay, um. We'll get you here. I'll be using your hair. If you just fill in the sheet with your, um, name and contact, it won't.
Yeah, for.
Okay, well, we, we actually, yeah. Okay, would you like to proceed, please?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, so, and council members. My name is Rosie Tati, and alongside Gurdeep Tati, we are here today to present our conditional use application for 803 Fort Gary Road. This 80-acre property is located at the northwest corner of Fort Gary Road and Linklater Road. At the heart of this application is a 200 square foot barn, which we have thoughtfully renovated into an elegant event venue. Our vision is to create a welcoming space for family-oriented gatherings, including weddings, anniversaries, birthdays, and retirement celebrations. The venue will operate seasonally from May to October exclusively on weekends with events taking place between 11:00 PM and 11:00 PM. There will be over, no overnight stays, no temporary structures, and all food and beverages will be brought in for each event. We wanted to show that slide with the Zoom. Is that possible?
Sorry, which slide?
Wanted to, nobody sent us a Zoom link. We wanted to show some slides of the venue.
I can, I can see if I have that. Had you sent them recently, because I don't?
No, we didn't. You said you would help us, um, connect.
I, oh, uh, if you have the laptop, yes.
Yeah, that's.
Uh.
You want us to bring it there?
Uh, sure, I can help facilitate the setup.
I will need to stop sharing.
Uh, yes. You'll need to join the Zoom call. So I had sent that email to you with the Zoom link. Oh, it's, there's a link from, um, this one right here. I'll have to let you in to accept the invite, and then once you're, you can share your screen and then take the photos. Okay, I believe I just accepted, and then you can share the screen. It should populate.
The interior of the venue.
It's only switching on the one television? There we go.
Oh, there.
With a maximum capacity of 200 guests, the venue is ample onsite parking on a 30,000 square foot grass field. Guests access to the venue and parking directly from Fort Gary Road. We understand that members of the community have raised some concerns, and we would like to take this opportunity to address them directly. One issue that has been raised is trespassing. Previously, there was an issue where Google Maps incorrectly pinned our address to Linklater Road, causing some confusion for guests. This has now been fully corrected, and guests are directed to the proper location. We also want to clarify that gravel roads will not be used for access. All access, um, will be via Gary Road. We only have one, one entrance, and that's directly from Fort Gary Road. So there's no need to you to go on to Linklater or any other, any other roads to access our property. To further ensure accuracy, we have installed clear directional signage in compliance with municipal guidelines, preventing visitors from mistakenly entering other properties or driving onto Linklater Road. Yeah, okay. Another concern was traffic. We recognize that increased, increased traffic is a valid consideration. But we want to emphasize that Manitoba highways has no objections to our use of these roads. Unlike concerts or sporting events, weddings and similar gatherings do not result in a sudden influx of vehicles. Arrivals and departures happen gradually and are staggered throughout the day, which means there should be no traffic congestion or backups. Based on the events we had already hosted, the number of vehicles typically range from 50 to 60 per event. And, um, as many guests chose to carpool or use shuttle services, something that we actively encourage. Moreover, these events will only take place two days a week in the summer, further reducing any impact on the road use. We have also heard concerns regarding noise. We take this issue very seriously and want to assure the community that our events will fully comply with the municipality's noise by law. All events will be held indoors, and we made a significant investment in soundproofing, purchasing $60,000 worth of soundproofing panels that will be installed before our first event. This is a picture of ours, our inventory of those, um, sound panels. Additionally, the venue is surrounded by a dense tree line, which serves as a natural sound barrier, further preventing noise from traveling beyond the property. Okay. Another key, uh, also, events all of us will end by 11:00 PM, ensuring that the venue does not create any late-night disturbances. Another key issue raised was safety. Our venue is specifically designed to host family-friendly events with guests of all ages, from young children to elderly grandparents. Safety is a top priority, and we are committed to ensuring a secure environment. Our trained event staff will monitor all gatherings, and we are open to hiring security personnel if necessary. We will also enforce responsible alcohol service and promote designated driver programs and transportation options to ensure that all guests leave safely. There were additional concerns into, including the septic system. Which we have updated specifically for the event venue's bathrooms. Beyond providing a beautiful gathering space, we are committed to being a positive addition to the community of St Andrews. Our venue would create economic benefits by supporting local businesses as we intend to hire photographers, florists, caterers, and property maintenance services from within the area whenever possible. Additionally, we would love for the venue to serve as a community space available for corporate meetings or other, other local events. We have already invested over 1.2 million dollars into this project, ensuring that the venue enhances, not detracts from the surrounding area. As you can see in these images, we have carefully maintained the property, creating an inviting and picturesque setting that blends seamlessly with the rural landscape. Our goal is not only to be a part of this community, but to contribute to its charm and vibrancy. We truly appreciate your time and consideration and hope to have the opportunity to become a valuable part of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel members, do you have any questions of the applicant? Uh, Counselor Dornbach?
Do you currently have a liquor license with the province?
No.
You don't?
Um, the venue is, um, it will have, uh, people that come in and use the, uh, the property for their function. They would, it would be honest, would be on them to take out a, a liquor license for their event. If they want.
Yeah, another question is, um, and you kind of clarified it there with your slide was sound suppression. Now, I'm not a, I'm not a big Facebook guy, but, um, sometimes I get, like, to do certain things, someone sends me some stuff. And I think it was last year, someone had sent a video to me where one of your neighbors was outside on their deck, and it was loud, and all they could hear was noise from the bar.
We apologize for that, and, uh, so that's why we're, um, we've taken the steps that we have, uh, with the soundproofing and to, to ensure that, that, uh, um, that the music and everything is, uh, posed by the bylaws of its, its cap at 11:00 PM. And the soundproofing is $60,000, and it's going to cost us $20,000, $30,000 to install. So it's not a small thing. We're taking it very seriously, so we don't have that problem again.
You know about the, uh, the decimal level then, once you put the sound suppression in? It might have been on the box?
On the box.
Uh, no.
I could get that information to you. Sorry, I didn't, I didn't come with that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Debbie Member, I think?
Yes, hello, uh, thanks for coming. If we go back to the sound depression or suppression, uh, how do you plan to do that? Do you plan to hang tiles or plan to make a false ceiling such as we have here?
It's a suspension type of ceiling, like, there's, there's panels, there's similar to this, there are panels that are installed.
So it would be, uh, it would actually lower the roof a little bit more?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Um, okay, that's, that's, that's really what I wanted to know. I was under the impression that you may be just hanging. But if you're, you're, you're making, what you're doing is you're making a false ceiling, right?
That's right, correct, yes.
Any other questions?
Uh, the documentation you have from highways that they didn't have, do you have, are you able to, do you have that available, or?
I don't. I, I was just, um, when we, um, applied, there was no documentation, like, it was, apparently it was presented to to highways, and then there was no response, and there, there was no objection. That's all, that's the information that I have.
Any further, any other question? By counsel? Okay, thank you so much. Okay, we have another in opposition. I'll start with, um, Lieutenant Knapp. Would you like to come to my opponent?
Um, but, there are. I'm of St Andrews Council. My wife and I are residents of 6 miles away. Our home is located directly across the road from 803 Fort Gary Road. We hereby submit our opposition to conditional use permit file number CU01-2025 concerning the opening of a wedding venue on the property located at 803 Fort Gary. On October 10th, 2023, council unanimously rejected the application of CU number 302023, also requesting a wedding venue of the same property. This was unanimous. The reason given was as follows. The application may generate negative impacts on the adjacent properties, and the, and the application is not compatible with the general agricultural and residential nature of this surrounding area. The reasons are consistent with section 106.1, section 2 of the RRPD Planning Act. To my knowledge, there have been no amendments to the section of the act, nor have there been any changes to the surrounding properties and their uses. Therefore, it should hold true, but CU012025 be rejected for the same reasons. I do go on and explain some other reasons, just to paraphrase. If we remember, this applicant was performing innovations without permits the last time we were here. They held various, several events in 2023. After being rejected on October 2023, they had a few occurrences of events in 2024, all of which have been reported to this municipality. Our house is about 200 feet away from this building. I refuse to believe that when it's 30 degrees. when it's thirty degrees outside, that people are going to be in this building the entire day and night. They're going to be out in the yard making quite significant noise that we've experienced. And it's not just the decimals that come out from the sound. It's also the frequency. The bass from this music was vibrating the windows and everything. Sometimes we like to get to bed early on a Friday or Saturday night to get up fishing at five in the morning. It's not possible to go to bed at eight, nine o'clock at night when this is happening. The entire peacefulness of our neighborhood is gone when this event takes place. The two reasons that this application was rejected still hold true. It will have a negative impact. And this is a farming and residential area. Thank you.
Thank you. One moment. Uh, council, does anyone have any question? Mr. Knapp? Okay, thank you.
Uh, so that one instance, um, or I guess you ordered a couple. Was there, um, was our C P notified or was there like the complaint you said you made to our bylaw or? I just want to confirm how though.
In twenty twenty-four, you're referring to?
Yeah, yeah.
So the bylaw here was we reported and we also reported to our C P. And nothing was done.
Okay, um, Tammy Knapp. So. You have anything else to add?
No, I submitted a letter.
Okay, yes, I should note for the record, we do have nine letters of opposition.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Andrew Baucher. Would you like to speak, please?
Oh, good evening to the council. Um, I'm not as politically correct as some. I apologize for that. Um, I am Mr. Knapp's neighbor farther down the road. Um, I'm in agreeance with all of Mr. Knapp's concerns. I also have concerns of my own. Um, no matter how much you attempt to reduce the amount of, uh, there will still be trespassing. I have an eleven-year-old son. No matter how much you try and reduce the amount of alcohol consumption, there will still be vehicles being driven. I have concerns for my son. For me, it's safety, not so much the noise. Pardon me, I'm getting over the cold. Um, however, the noise, I do get affected. I can hear the bass. Uh, no matter how much sound suppression you put into it, bass overflows. So I have the same concerns and I am the next house in line down Linklater Road. Um, I oppose to this the most I possibly can. Um, those are my concerns. Safety for my son, trespassing on my property, noise pollution. My house looks on the back of their property. So everything that flows out of the back of their venue is going to be visual to my house. This is not an agriculture or this is an agricultural zone. It's not a party zone. Those are my concerns.
May I clarify, are you to the, you're on Linklater? You're the north.
And to the northeast of this venue.
Okay, because it's maybe your property that we're dealing with.
Yes.
And as far as you can see back, there's a bush and then there's a house directly.
This used to be a horse training stable.
Across the street?
Yeah, I'm on, uh, tents on Mr. Knapp's side. Uh, farther down, I'm the next house in the road.
So about how far down are you? Half a mile?
I'm a half a kilometer.
Well, I was gonna say, please don't say kilometers.
I'm sorry, but, but for me, on the tachometer on my vehicle, I'm a kilometer and a half from number eight highway and I'm a half a kilometer from sixty-seven. Exactly.
Okay.
Um, I can hear trucks with, um, brake brakes hitting the highway and I've heard more noise from this van, these venues than my property.
Council members, do you have any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Questions?
No, thank you. Thank you. Um, Robert Lindzio. Would you like to speak, please? Thank you.
Um, I live on eight three seven, uh, Fort Gary Road, so I'm one kilometer from, from this event. Actually, probably less than one kilometer. Um, and my letter dealt with concerns regarding people who are intoxicated uh, getting onto our highways. If, uh, this is approved, there is actually no doubt to my mind that there will be, as a result, more intoxicated drivers on our highway, passing our house, driving down Linklater Road and then using the connecting roads, Calder Road, in, using the gravel roads as we know. Some of us may know people who do this and that is to evade the police, knowing that they've, they've indulged more than below the law. Now, I'd just like to bring some attention to some of the information I did pull from, uh, N P I's statistics, um, which was written October twenty twenty-four. In twenty twenty-two, impaired drivers were responsible for sixteen point eight percent people killed on Manitoba's roads. Two point nine percent of people seriously injured. Now, looking at the data, it's clear that, uh, twenty twenty-two was an anomaly because in some, the years before, twenty seventeen, twenty twenty-one, the average, um, number of people killed uh, happened, uh, sorry, thirty-one point two percent of deaths on Manitoba's roads were due to intoxicated, uh, drivers. Oh, it was a factor. Um, and four point four percent of people seriously injured. Now, this excludes, um, how many accidents occur. Just think about how many accidents which must have for thirty-one point two percent of the deaths to, uh, on Manitoba roads could have occurred. And also, uh, in the report, it states in twenty twenty-two, traffic collisions in urban locations continue to account for the majority of traffic victims, eighty-five percent. But it goes on to say, while rural locations accounted for more. Fifty-nine percent of all fatalities happen on rural roads. That is St. Andrews, um, and all of the municipalities, of course, outside of Winnipeg and I assume Brandon and, and Selkirk. Um, so in approving this, despite the, the willingness and, uh, to, to try and guide people to do the right thing and drink the right amount and car share and, uh, those are all ready in place. There are rats on TVs. There's posters everywhere. You get them in flyers from N P I. Um, you also get sent to prison for up to ten years. It still happens. It therefore will still happen. Account, I did, I provided in my letter a rough estimate of how many people we might be seeing attending this event over a one-year period. And, and I use twenty-seven weekends, uh, one event each weekend. I'm sure as a business, they're gonna want a lot more than that. But I went with seventy-five percent, uh, capacity. So that's a hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty. Anyway, we end up at four thousand and fifty people attending these events throughout the year, one year. Now, we know that some of them are going to be children. We know that some of them are going to be responsible. It's an all-day drinking party, call the wedding, or whatever you want to call it. Wedding, uh, birthday, christening. It's a party. People drink a party. You know, with that number of people, some of them are going to be getting on this road, these roads, um, when they shouldn't be. So in proving it, we're kind of, we're giving the okay to them go on the road. I know we're not, I know it's not the okay. But if we, if, if the approval is denied, we're saying no. And that's what I'm asking council members to, uh, to do in this case. I'd also like to address the issue of the noise. Um, I am an engineer and the building may, the sound may be dampened down. We know that the thumping sound can propagate through, um, fairly thick, thick walls. I wouldn't call the tree line dense. It's, it's probably two or three trees. Uh, during October, they may, or, or May, the trees may not be fully leafed. So it's, there's a bit of a barrier, but it's clear from what we've heard from, from, uh, the other resident that it's not affecting. So we can rule out the trees having much, uh, impact on the noise. But I assume the building has doors, fairly large doors, because there's a lot of people going in and out. And those doors are going to be opening and closing. Also, in the evening, when people leave it, there's no soundproofing on car doors. So you've got, and they, they gave, the example given was sixty, sixty cars. So, and car sharing. So maybe you've got three, four doors per car being opened and closed at around eleven P M at night. And then you've got them leaving. So you'll have some, like one of my sons who had one of these exhausts that's very loud. You'll have people with electric vehicles too. They can speak off. That's good. But there will be an awful lot more noise than just the, the music. All the noise from the traffic slamming the doors, people yelling at one another across the, uh, across the car park, see you tomorrow, et cetera, et cetera. So it's much bigger than just soundproofing one building. Um, and that's it really, I think.
Thank you. Members, do you have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Did you confirm your a kilometer weight?
About two thirds. We're, we're between there and, and highway eight.
Okay.
Now, uh, regards to highway eight and sixty-seven, it was mentioned. It is a very dangerous spot. I've seen accidents there. My neighbor, he's seen deaths there. He's seen a child from, from a, from a back of a vehicle, but unfortunately, the child was, was fine. Uh, he actually ran a fifty. Child didn't notice, he didn't throw from the car. But, um, again, we would be adding for that. Intoxicated drivers tend to drive fast. In fact, they either at two speeds crawl so it won't attract, attract any attention or speed because I don't know what the heck I'm doing here, like.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Um, Brittany Tatarie?
Hello. Uh, my name is Brittany and my, my husband and my property backs onto, um, this potential wedding venue that used to be a horse barn. Um, we have many concerns. Um, we have a small family, young family, a three-year-old daughter and, um, when the venues her, when the wedding venue had events on before, there were people coming in our driveway. I know they have said that there are signage now, but it is one little tiny sign at the end of the driveway that says the number. There's nothing to state that is a wedding venue. The actual horse stable sign is still up there and standing. Um, the noise, as I said, my property does back onto theirs and there is that thin tree line and then it is direct back all fields right to my house. So when they do have events, especially if the wind is going the right way, we hear it all. There's no, nothing that they can stop that from coming. You can hear the bass. You can hear everything. Um, there's also the concern about fires, well, smoking there. Um, we had an incident when the previous owners were there that there was a fire and because it is all fields, um, and you know, any of you guys are farmers, you do know that if it's not tilted, it will just go all the way across. We're very fortunate. We have the St. Andrews Fire Department that is fantastic and they were able to put it out before it hit my house. But it did go fast and that is another concern that we have. Um, noise, safety, and my one big concern and my biggest one is you'll see in Google Zoom or the Google image that there is a creek line that goes through there. Um, it goes through there, through my bush, and then it goes back out through the guy at the field behind me. Um, in the back of my property at that, which meets up with the people beside us, there is a pond, um, on both of the, both of our properties that for the overflow from this creek. My big concern is that this creek does fill up, my pond does fill up, and if there's intoxicated people walking around, what happens when they walk into my pond? Um, what is going to be stopping them from trespassing and walking in there and then dying in my pond? Yeah, and that was it. I hope you guys oppose it. Thank you.
Does he remember his question?
Yes, hello. Uh, the question I have is, uh, what is the actual distance from the venue to your, uh, your property? How long would that be?
Everyone's gonna say three quarters of a mile, so about a kilometer, I guess it would be. Um, because it is a better than angle. I can see the whole back of their property though. Like I can see the barn and all that. So.
About a kilometer then?
Yeah, I would say that, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
And just one kilometer north, you're like. Yes, I'm the. Say, Councilor Sniker?
How much property do you, how many acres have you got?
We have eighty.
You have eighty and they have eighty?
Yes, we have the back.
Thank you.
And I apologize. It was you writing your, last name is Teteran?
Teteran, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Cody Teteran, did you have anything new to add?
No.
Ken Nichol.
I submitted a letter.
Okay. You. Cassandra Morrison.
Yeah, she is council. Uh, so my name is Cassandra Morrison, resident of six four five Linklater Road, so directly across the street from a portion of this property. I have lived on Linklater Road for a total of thirty-one years, growing up on my family's century-old farm where my, my mother and my brother still reside. I left for Winnipeg a few years, but ultimately returned to buy my own home on Linklater just over ten years ago to start my own family. Why I return? Because Linklater Road has always been the epitome of quiet, safe and familiar. Where we knew our neighbors, had similar goals and we recognized nearly every car or combine that drove by. And out the window, across the street was fields and young girls learning to jump horses. Now, we are threatened with the possibility of a parking lot. We watch out the window as multiple cars pass or turn in our driveway to find eight oh three Fort Gary Road. But despite concerns from neighbors and being denied here one year ago, have still been hosting weddings and large events. I would like to add that I'm not against growth in our community. I just don't believe that a large-scale wedding venue is the right move. So please consider our thoughts and the facts when considering your decision in regards to CU one twenty twenty-five and whether or not it is the right move for your community and their neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, council members. Do you have any questions? I just have one. So you're behind Knapp's on the same side?
Same side of the road, yeah. Um, so I'm directly across from their property, uh, but like the field portion of it. So I know it was a tox, uh, at one point of that becoming like overflow parking. And right now it's a field and that's what it should be.
So you're to the east or to the west?
Um, east. Well, okay, so the property north, I'm just north of Linklater Road.
You're north of Linklater?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Thanks. Um, okay, there's any further? Question? Um, Robert Shirley?
Good afternoon, council. So I also submit a letter. Quite extensive, so I'm not going to read it verbatim. It is nine. So just say I'm at six thirty-seven Linklater Road. So just to make that as clear for not to explain again. So yes, we have the maps at the corner and either is just south of me, I'm the center house. And then you have the horses. We're all on five acres, the last three of us. So yes, we're, it's not that damn much. We are an adjacent property. And like Cassie just said, overflow, we can see the horses, we can see the barn. We can hear the noises. It's very relevant. Like I say, I just want to bring up some points that actually were just brought to me recently since I've submitted this letter. So I've actually asked for the permits. Were there any permits pulled? Evidence was today that they've concreted those. Sewer permits. For those tanks, two tanks, far as I understand, were installed. And we seen the tanks and then they're gone. So they say they upgraded. Are they properly installed? Is there proper sound they had underneath those tanks? There was no, is there inspections now?
That will all be done with river plumbing.
Which has not, and will provide us with any information on any permits ever pulled since the cease and desist orders.
Well, we're dealing now with the application.
Which is all part of, is part of my concerns. We're dealing with the application that now our waterways, we all drink well water where sewer is not properly looked after. Is that our concern of this application? I believe it is. That's my opinion. I believe it is and nobody can provide this information to us and saying there hasn't been permits pulled. I believe it is, and nobody can provide this information to us and saying there hasn't been permits pulled. Where a consequence is gonna start? How many times do we have to come to our R M, the planning board? Bylaw officers, R C M P? And not one consequence?
Yeah, I'll stop you there because council wouldn't be aware of any of that.
But I've looked for these records, who is that? All of us, I know the Naps have.
But that's not the matter before.
So today.
Today is just the application is before us for a conditional use.
Exactly, so add this, so for this application, who's gonna actually enforce it, the following laws? No enforcement's been done for this.
The application is approved, there will be conditions provided by council. That will have to be looked after by Red River Plumb, there will be conditions outlined.
All due respect, I understand what you're saying. We have by, or those purposes that this council has approved, they go through readings to be enforced.
That's it, Snaker.
So I can leave it at that, but that's.
It's my understanding, that's what you're, I get what you're saying, and I'm not disagreeing with it, but just step back a bit. It's my understanding, these residents need the conditional use before they can do anything, signage, sewer, all that kind of stuff. If this was approved, conditional use, then it does what the mayor said. And R R P D steps in, everybody steps in and they will have to then start doing everything that is legally required of them. So you're one step ahead, same as the signage, same as everything else, they can't put any of that or do any of that without the conditional use. Which is the starting point for today.
Well, I'll end it at this, and that's fine, but as you just see by their presentation that they made today. They've already done a lot of this work, you know, conditional use already put in place. So I'll end it at that, I appreciate it.
Council members, any, or sorry, do you?
No, I still just, uh, I have one more thing, just let me get my clouds together there. Um, oh, just to say that as the continued venues. So yes, during lots of times, unfortunate enough that I do go to late property. So I don't see it very often, happened one weekend, weekend that the last venue was held, September twentieth, was the date? Yeah, we talk all the time, we're a close community. I'm one that say, okay, well, let's go see what's going on, but if you need proof on how packed it gets. I went on to the property and asked them what's going on. They didn't need with, I left lightly. One of their guests very much said right on video. That they were having another wedding venue, that I'd asked if the owners were around to speak. He said, no, they're busy right now. So if anybody wishes to see it or you want to enter, go on my phone and say it. And saying that, yeah, there's lots of worries about safety, our children, I'd say every, pretty much everyone on the whole world now has children. Very important to us, we have some new neighbors that joined us, they bought the property because they wanna have area for their grandchildren. It's very family oriented area. Fire issues, brought up one, there's actually been two. One, that barn has been on fire as well. Through all this conditional use, I didn't see anything to do with protecting from fire. And we all know that our St. Andrews Fire Department, those accidents at eight and sixty seven. I know we don't, that's provincial, as stated, but it's our fire department, R R C M P. They're already overwhelmed to deal with those issues. I think that's all I have.
Thank you, council members, any further questions? No, thank you. Jared? I'm sorry, Johnson?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Is it T R R or Jared?
Uh, Jared Johnson, yeah, so I got here already. Uh, I can't, I don't have too much more to add, um, I do agree with all the, uh, holes and points. Um, when we moved to back, as I stated, our family has a heritage farm actually of Linklater Road. And has been here for generations, so when we moved back here together, uh, it was to raise a family. And we have been doing that, but my biggest concern out of all the concerns is safety. Um, because my daughter's gonna be nine and she's on her bike, um, again, a lot of us have young kids that wanna hang out together, play. Um, and the idea of hundreds of people coming in and out, alcohol involved, um. Driving is a big concern, so I wanted to, but if there's one point to hammer home for, for my concerns, it's that, so.
Thank you, um, council members, do you have any questions? No, okay, thank you. Carrie Hill and Dean Fontaine. Is there anything you wish to add?
Well, pretty much everything that everyone else is saying, we just moved into the area, so I mean, it's the same idea. I don't think a wedding venue should be, you know, in a country setting. You know, and they're drinking is wrong, I mean, I haven't said everyone has a rate earned money, but I just don't think that's the right. Bit in that area.
Okay.
That's all it is.
Council members, do you have any questions? Okay, thank you. Jordan Hujol?
Uh, nothing, nothing further to add, I think folks here did a, did a good job of explaining all of the, uh. The, uh, thoughts that, that are with me as well, uh, one thing I did wanna just bring up, I, I see the parking is all on a crossfield. Um, has there been any thought, I guess, around tracking the rains, we all know the black mud around here, getting tracked out onto sixty seven? Um, has there been any thought around?
We'll have the applicant answer, because I thought, was there not gonna be, is there not a gravel parking lot?
Oh, yes, we're planning to though.
No, not, not.
Okay, those all in opposition have spoken, plus we have the nine written letters on file. Um. Kelly Apples? Did you, would you like to speak to the applicants? Would you like to have the microphone then, it can be heard better on, because we're recording it, it's on.
Hi, good evening, council members, my name is Kelly Apples. And I have actually been working with Holy Spice for the past two years. I came here to speak on behalf because there's a lot of fear and unknown, and I do believe it is because it is for an Indian wedding venue. So it's a wedding venue for everybody, there's when it comes for drinking as well, I am the bartender. I've been working with them, I personally don't drink, and when I have venues like this with two hundred and fifty people. On average, there's about forty to fifty people who are drinking and they're the men, their wives. These are family events, this is not like some wild party and I feel like people have a Canadian version of weddings. That go until two A M, when these weddings, no matter where they are held, only go till midnight. I'm always given permits from the guests who are renting at any location. It's not just this farmhouse that I travel with, I travel with them everywhere. They have become a family to me and they're very good people and I feel there is so much judgment around it. Uh, the culture, yes, there's a lot of people, yes, and it's really fun, yes, the music is very loud and it's really fun to dance to. You know, um, but these things are stuff that is being addressed, right? And if it's till eleven P M, that is in, you know, regulations, that's the rules for everybody. And they're following it, when it comes to alcohol, their wives are taking care of them, getting them home, people are not. Being drinking and driving and. You don't see people walking off, you know, getting lost in a pond. The culture is very much community based, more so community based than us, like I'm a native from this Red River community. And it's sort of almost shocking to me because the nature is collaboration and working together and strength and diversity. And when you see this type of large opposition to a certain culture race, like culture to culture. And because I work in it and I've been in culture, it seems. It just, there's a narrative, you know, and a fear and unknown. And I think I would also suggest if there's anybody who does have that concern, please do come and introduce yourself. You can come sit with me if you don't wanna talk to anybody else and see the events for yourself, you know? You might learn something, you might have fun, and you might make friends like I have, you know? And it's been something I've been doing for a couple of years on side and I've never had an issue with any individual. In the Indian culture versus with the English pubs, it's completely different. Far more respectful even with alcohol involved. I would just want to come here and hear that for them as well, because no reason to be against, okay, thank you, yes.
Councilor Jordan Voss?
Um, yeah, I, I take a little bit of offense to what you're saying, that we're against.
Oh, sorry, not yourself, sir.
No, I understand, but. I'm, I, I don't, people don't know me per se from this area, but I know these names and I can't see one of these people having anything.
I'm not saying there is, I'm saying it's perceived, right, like it's such a large opposition and I've seen other wedding venues that were not. And so to me, it's almost like, is it because this, it's sort of a question that does arise for myself, right?
The location.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with race.
Yeah, order, we've had.
But we're not, you know, like, I don't know, right, it feels that way very much because I'm in both cultures and communities. So to me, it.
Okay. Councilor Jordan Voss.
Thank you, I'm good, yeah, I just needed to make a point there.
We don't wanna turn this into the race card, but you know.
I'm not, I'm sorry.
Thank you for calling.
Lady speaking, lady speaking made it a racial issue. There's nobody here, to my knowledge, I fought human rights.
Excuse me, order, or else we'll close the hearing down.
I, I'm sorry, well, I did find it offensive.
Thank you, I apologize. Councilor Jordan Voss is dressed. Thank you for your comments, do you have anything further to add?
No, ma'am.
It's closed, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, well, I apologize. Yantin Goben? All right, sorry, what, G A U?
G A U V I N.
Oh, sorry.
I, I reside at eight thirty eight Forker Road, uh, up the road from where this venue is. Uh, local business owner and, uh, I own a business as well too. Uh, I am not against this project, uh, as long as it's, uh, is done, we're seeing the guidelines that needs to be done. Uh, I believe that, uh, this community could use more venues out in our area. There is a little bit all down the road that's been there for forty years and none of the community members had any problems with that there. Uh, I think in the spirit of entrepreneurship, this, uh, this venue could help us out, um, myself as well, and. Um, hopefully that, uh, it, it does not affect all people that are living right next door to them for the loud things of that. Um, but as a business owner, I like to see more people in our community. This would be a good venue to help out on things and, uh, bring more people into our area.
Council, do you have any questions? No, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, everyone that's brought on my list has spoken, um, Ms. Sorry, Rosie, please, I'm sorry, how do you say your last name?
Thank you.
Hey, um, do you have any comments to make about any of the points raised? Okay, would you come to microphone, please?
First off, we're not here to upset anybody, we're not here to impose anything on any of our neighbors. Um, we want to become a part of this community. Yeah, all the points that everybody brings up are lit, but we are trying to address each and every one of them. Um, most, uh, you have to realize this is an eighty acre property. And the, most of the neighbors are quite a distance away, so it's, um, the noise factor. Uh, there's one property that is across the street, across Linklater, that is the, probably the, the closest. Um, neighbor to us. So we are doing what we can and we will do further if, if, uh, if there's anything else we can do to mitigate the noise. Um, with the soundproofing, I mean, with, uh, allowing the music to be played only indoors. To make sure that it follows the noise bylaws that if they're, um, yeah, you know, they, they shut the music at eleven o'clock. Um, the trespassing issue also, I, uh, I, I don't know. Um, trespassing is a crime, it's a criminal offense. So we have laws and law enforcement, um, guiding, there's rules in place, but you cannot go on somebody else's property without their permission. Um, there is, we will do whatever we can, we will make sure that everybody that comes is, whoever's. Um, holding the event, um, lets their, lets their guests know that this is where you're supposed to be, this is the venue and you stay within the venue. Um, um, you know, uh, lines or the, or the building or wherever you're supposed to be, that's where you stay. If it's, if it's that much of an issue, we would, we would gladly, um, add security, we've been, we're also adding security to. Um, to each of the, um, uh, events. There are numerous, numerous, um, wedding venues like this all across Manitoba, all across. Right, um, I've been to several, several of them myself, I've, I've hosted them, right? And, um, none of these concerns are, everything is done accordingly to. But there's permits that have to be taken up to hold an event, there's permits that have to be taken up to serve alcohol. There's permit, you know, um, in our own, own, um. Uh, event that we held, we had buses for everybody, we just, we bussed everybody to the event and, and back. Right, to the city, um, is what we had done, so there's, there's a lot of things that can be done to mitigate any of these concerns. We are not, um. We're, we're, we're just as concerned and it's great that we, we get this information so that we can prevent any of this from happening. Um, the intoxicated drivers, respectfully, I wanted to address that. Unfortunately, impaired driving occurs everywhere. We can't just close all highways and venues everywhere to ensure that this doesn't happen. We are not the police, there are laws and law enforcement's in place for this. Um, we will do all that we can to encourage responsible driving with behavior. We will have clear policy for serving alcohol, including train staff. We will actively promote designated riding by offering incentives to designated drivers. Also, we can allow guests to leave the house overnight and park home. I believe that everyone considers their own safety and the safety of their children paramount. And they plan ahead of time how to get home safely. I personally do that, I'm not a drinker. Be the designated driver and, um, so I'm, you know, I, I'm the one that takes everybody in my family and extended family. Like if I have a, you know, we'll take the largest vehicle available to us so that we can take the most number of passengers, right? If one of us, one of us has a minivan, we take that so we can take seven or eight people and, and I'm the driver. So, um, it's on, the onus is on the guests to ensure their safety and there's. Most all of these, um, events that we, um, hold are. Uh, have, we have children, there's, most of them are family, they're all families that come to these events. So yes, they're, they're concerned for their own children and for the children in the area is the same, right? We're not gonna jeopardize any of these children by, by no means. Um, I, I, I was, you know, I understand the statistics that were shown by, uh, Mr. Lindstall. And, um, I don't want to invalidate his concern because his concerns are my concerns. Safety concerns are paramount in my mind, um, I, I, I'm strongly against drinking and driving. But, um, I can also show you the statistic that, um. That in twenty twenty, the same, I, same, uh, document that cited in twenty twenty. It shows that the number of road fatalities increased from twenty nineteen. But in twenty twenty, every single wedding venue was shut down. Right, so I'm not here to do out numbers, I'm not here to say that that's not valid. I would be the last person to say that, you know, that we would in any way. Um, promote drinking and driving or dangerous driving or any of that, but we will do everything that we can to mitigate that. Um. Um. Uh. So I I I have to say that there is no correlation. But we can't, we can't take a twenty, or we can't take an M P I. Um, statistics report on accidents and fatalities. And correlate them with wedding venues. Right, there is no correlation, I respectfully say that, I am totally on the same side in this issue. I do not want anybody to get hurt, I do not want anybody drinking and driving. And, but, you know, there's so many venues, we can't, uh uh all across Manitoba. And um we can't take this one report and say it's because of wedding venues or that that these fatalities. I respectfully say that I don't, I'm not, no, no, um, I'm not, I'm trying not to be, um. I'm not being rude or anything like that, but I can't, you can't expect. That every fatality, the onus is on us to, or every person that's drinking and driving, the onus is on the. On the owner of the of the of the venue. We're not holding the venues, people are holding, we're renting it out to other people to hold these. Uh, to hold these events. Smoking um is, and fire safety, um obviously, we would have to comply with fire safety regulations in St. Andrews. Um. The, there is no food prepared on site, all food is brought in. So there's no cooking, there's no stoves, that sort of thing that there would be any um um fire that way. Uh, smoking is not allowed in public places. And and um I've never gone to any event. Myself where there was smoking, um I don't know of any uh. Public event or a public party or event that you can go to and you could smoke. Um, I'm sorry if I'm if I'm if I have incorrect information. But I I I don't think that you're allowed to smoke and I don't, I don't, I don't think we would allow smoking, there's children, there's old people. I mean, older people coming, I I I would just, I would have a no, no smoking venue, I I would not allow that smoking. And I've never been to one that where there was smoking allowed, you would have to go outside to grab a smoke. There's not, um, so. Um, I. I wanted to. Think that I've. I hope I addressed everybody's concerns, we're here to put everybody's mind at ease, we're not here. To rock the boat, we're not here to interfere with anybody's um, you know, use of the area. We're not here to cause anybody any harm or to um, we're just here. Here to thought this was a great idea because it's something that St. Andrews doesn't have. A lot of the other, South Kirk and other municipalities, Rochester has one, Neverville has one. So it was something that we thought would be a great opportunity here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor second?
You have two questions, um. Is it safe to assume that if you get this going and you'll be uh putting up signage, better signage, you know, that stuff that we wanna?
You would, I would, I would love to be able to, I don't know if we're allowed to, but on the highways, if we can put signage. That that, you know, there's, when there is an event, if we can put that there's signage that there is an event in progress here. Um, we we will definitely look into everything that we can. Right, we can have signs coming up to the venue, I'm sorry, coming to the venue that uh this is, this is. This is the direction to go and guiding people how to get there. The venue is act, the property is before Linklater. Right, on on Fort Gary Road, if you're coming from. Winnipeg Highway number, it's McPhillips, that becomes Highway Eight, right? It's uh, so it's it's before Linklater, so if there's signage there, we can Google Maps takes you right there. Um, I don't see um that it would affect Linklater Road. We will do everything we can to mitigate that.
One more, um. At this time, you're not doing anything for overflow parking or any of that, you're going with what's on the design and that's it, correct?
Correct, because there's um a maximum of two hundred people that of capacity, right? And if you take into account families and people carpooling and whatnot, say fifty to sixty cars, we have ample space for that.
Okay.
We don't need to overflow.
Thank you.
It was just that Google Maps was taking people to Linklater Road.
And that's been addressed with?
Oh, definitely.
That's all. Any council members, do you have any other questions? I tell, uh, Debbie, remember, I think.
Yes, this is uh not so much a question, but it's a. A little bit of a history of the area, I'm a lifelong resident of uh St. Andrews and uh. What you're proposing is really not new to St. Andrews, okay? Uh, I can think of uh three venues, uh for example, uh Rossdale Hall, uh the old Creation Club. And Little Britain Hall, they all conduct socials, wedding events. And other events, uh not only through the week, but on the weekend. And have been doing that for many uh many years, so it's it's. Uh, it's not something that is new to this area. Rossdale Hall is situated in a. A residential areas or a a highly populated area. Uh, so is the Creation Club and Little Britain Hall, uh the neighbors are. Not more than fifty feet away. Uh, and and they're holding these type of events uh regularly. Um. Again, that's just for information.
Other people, correct?
Uh, you answered my question on the signage, um for the. Uh, outdoor smoking considerations, what what was the proposal there?
No smoking.
I thought you said outside though.
Well, I was just saying that that's a general thing that I said, right, that I've never been to um any, any.
I know indoor, correct?
Indoor is done, right? But um I. Um, well, I I don't, I don't, I don't think there would be, smoking wouldn't be an issue at all.
Like you're saying, there would be the proper precautions and area designated, is what you're saying?
Yes, if I had to do that, but I never had that experience, I'm so sorry.
There'll be a lot of areas.
We don't smoke, I mean.
They have a separate.
Yeah, you could, exactly, yeah, you could, exactly, for sure.
Designated a no smoking area outside the building.
Yeah.
Um.
That's something I would have to, um, you know, regulate myself on.
My last question was just based on on the noise, um in terms of with the soundproofing. Has there been any um? Like decibel readings or anything taken to know kind of what you have now to what it could potentially be with this soundproofing material or?
Well, respectfully, we would, we would, uh, we've already invested so much into this and then moving forward, we would need. Uh, you know, some assurance that we would. You know, we can move forward, we just kind of stopped, we bought the soundproofing material, it's housed there and we're. The, we were, it would cost us tens of thousands of dollars to install it and. And then we would know, like where we know, because of the size of the building and then with having these soundproofing panels put in. What that would do, we're told by the people that we bought them from that this would solve the problem. But again, I'm not, I'm not here to guarantee that because I I honestly don't know until we actually would go and do it.
I I, oh, I appreciate that, um. That was all I had for.
Any council members, any further questions?
I have a question.
Counselor Mondar.
So we had the this meeting about a year ago and we decided as council that we were not going to approve your application. For various reasons that some of them were brought up today with the doing work without permits, uh holding events. With the, it's uh the police involvement with the, you know, noise and traffic and different things. And I was just kind of wondering what your thought process was in the. Spending one point two million dollars after you basically. I think alienated yourself from every single resident around there. Uh, they brought their concerns last time about your venue. Uh, we didn't approve it. For various reasons and you're back after spending all this money. And it's been brought up that you didn't have permits to do various other things, can you uh? You you know, um, I'm just kind of wondering how um. How you could come back and and ask for uh us to approve something that we've already deemed as not something that's um. Conducive to the neighborhood.
Counselor Mondar, if I may, under the planning act, this is a new application. There's a time limit, you wait. Past application, this is like a brand new hearings.
That's my thoughts.
We're trying to rectify all the problems that we had before, going through the proper channels that R R P D. This is not, I I, as the, as Marisol said, this is not the um. Meeting or hearing for that, but just to put your mind at ease, we are going through all the proper channels. And to make sure that we meet all the codes, we have architects, job making proper drawings and engineers. Working on bringing on, bringing the building and up to code and doing it properly this time.
Like I see that barn and I see a, an un uh. No insulation in the attic, which tells me that the sound is just going to blow out of there. We've had one of your uh people here uh saying that, yes, it's extremely loud in the building. You know, that to me doesn't give me much confidence in uh. Soundproofing that you're going to do uh to satisfy the residents that are living two hundred feet away.
Respectfully, we would, we would like the chance to prove that we. Great.
Council members, do you have any further questions?
Thank you.
I just have a a couple of comments as well.
Go ahead, Counselor Hunt.
So, is is one of the conditions still having it for two years and and being renewed or looked at after that?
Uh, Counsel, I don't know, it's in our um, in the package.
Right.
Um, no, it's not in there. Uh. No, hours of operation limited twelve to eleven P M Saturdays, it's only open Saturdays and Sundays and I believe I saw it's from May to October.
Yeah.
Use of the property. And then it's about the zoning by law, property, municipalities, noise by law, vehicle parking contained on the property, no parking of Fort Gary Road, Linklater Road. And less obtained in annual business license from the R M.
Yeah, I couldn't see, uh, that might have been in the last application, but I'd just like to remind council. And everyone that a conditional can, uh maybe the planner can add to this, that a conditional use can be revoked at any time by council. Uh, if the conditions aren't followed set forth by council. Correct?
Question to me?
Well, actually, we have, you know, we've had that condition put on um in the past.
Yeah, I saw that condition being on the previous uh application and I do can connect those applications because they're the same owners. And same people applying twice. So if they're different, still it's somehow connected, the previous one being limited to two years. And that one's not, we haven't got any. Conditions like that from R M. But we do um include it, the last one that we sent today. That there will be no option to use. Let me just really note. No occupancy or use of structures can be proceeded until such time as all required permits are successfully applied to D N R M. So we're trying to limit these conditions here. We need all the permits and all the requirements and. This is what we have to recommend for now.
Right, but like I say, e- even though if all the conditions are met, all the conditions have to be met prior to the conditional use being given. And and council at any time can revoke the conditional use. For whatever reason, if 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 the if the conditions haven't been, haven't been followed, so. Just because the conditional use has been given, it doesn't mean it's there forever. So, just like to state that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hunt. So, um. You just read a condition, that's on on the papers. That was in our package.
I've studied today and asked for writing to give it to you before. You haven't got it?
Did you have that condition on the screen? On the, on the screen?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I have it.
It was other, because see, Counselor Hunt, he's on Zoom.
Okay, yeah, I have it and we put it on the website, she. And our website and yours too, so it's an agenda.
So I don't have it on my paper here.
We received the updated package uh just before the meeting.
Yeah, three hours.
So if you have a physical copy, it won't be on there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, you have any more, no, but no more questions, any more questions of the planner on this? Hey, Counselor Hunt's good, okay, next item. Will be conditional use number two dash two oh two five one thirty Lockport Road. Man, if I ever please proceed.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, just a second. I will share my screen. Okay, so this is a conditional use application, C U two twenty twenty five on a hundred thirty Lockport Road. And the purpose of that application is to establish a kennel license in um agriculture restricted zone. In A R, the kennels are permitted conditionally and they're asking for kennel license. So this is our location map of the subject property. And this is some site plan from the applicant and proposal location of the kennel. Should council wish to approve this application, the R P D recommends the following condition, that this conditional use is limited to what has been presented. Any other changes will require new uh conditional use approval. A maximum of ten domestic animals are permitted on the property at any time. By applicant owner to install secure changuine fencing to create a contained exercise area. Breeding or sale of animals is not permitted, the property must comply with the municipality's noise by law. And municipal staff may conduct periodic inspections to ensure the compliance. This is all that I have here, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, council members, do you have any questions you have for your planner?
Size of the kennels, that is, does, that it say what size they were looking to?
We have no information of that, unfortunately.
Yeah.
I, go ahead.
I noticed that there was a uh required for ten dogs here, who who set that up for ten dogs?
Bylaw.
Bylaw?
Mm-hmm.
I can answer that, I had submitted a con- a condition to prompt council's discussion on the upper limit of domestic animals. Read of replying needed a number though, so we started at ten.
And as you were, council can change that.
Yeah, it's three and more.
Yeah, I just want to know who came up with the number ten.
I thought we already had a bylaw that states you can only have three per lot.
That's why, that's why we're having hearings today.
That's why we're hearing that.
Um. Okay, Marlene Waterson, would you like to speak to the application? You're the applicant.
I am, and sorry, my husband wasn't able, um, he has the flu, so we told him to keep it to himself. Um, um, Mayor Swell, uh members of council, members of the community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening regarding our request for conditional license. In November, I reached out to Mayor Swell as we were urgently seeking zoning information for a property we were considering. She quickly directed us to Brighton, a planner who provided the necessary details. The property was highly sought after and to secure it, we had to remove all the conditions, including the kennel license approval. We have a letter from our real estate agent confirming our commitment to this property and the circumstances under which we secured that. On December twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, we took possession of our home. A place we chose to provide more space for our dogs to live, train and thr- thrive. Today, we are requesting a conditional license to responsibly exceed the allowable dogs in our home. We currently have four Cavaliers. As Cavaliers age and retire from competition, we need stability to introduce and trade with our younger dogs. While ensuring older dogs continue to live comfortably in our home. Cavalier King Charles Bean Spaniels are small, affectionate, gentle, typically weighing between twelve to eighteen pound. I have included a picture of Wyatt who is neutered and the reason I tell you that he is neutered is that we'd like to introduce four females. Um, Cavaliers are not a nuisance breed, but well-mannered companions, so we're carefully planning in hopes of purchasing four additional dogs. To ensure a balanced, manageable household over the next few months. And although it is not funny, um, you know, having one male and a whole bunch of females is much better than a whole bunch of males in a house. Um, our dogs are not kennel dogs, they are our family, they live inside our home, not in an outdoor shed or kennel. They share our space, including our bedrooms, and are never left outside. I want to address some things that I would think of if someone mentioned kennel. I would think about how waste is going to be picked up. Since these dogs come into our house, that is the utmost thing that is done every time they go out, they go as a pack and they come in as a pack and waste is spinned up. Our dogs are supervised at all times, barking will not be a disturbance as we will address it immediately. Dogs are well-trained show dogs, which is not allowed in the show ring. Fencing and containment, so we moved in in Novem- sorry, December.
And we can't put up.
So we're doing our very best with everyone, uh, but we plan to, uh, definitely put in a very large exercise pen. That will circle our property, um, just in the backyard around that pool, um, that I showed. And we have spoken with our immediate neighbor, addressing any questions, we have a letter support for one twenty eight Lockport Road, and we've spoken to the residents of one thirty two where no concerns were raised. My husband is a retired school teacher, home full time, and additionally, our retired lifelong friend will be moving in in the system. Our dogs are microchipped, fully vaccinated, and regularly seen by our vet, who has provided a letter confirming this as well. We do not breed our dogs, and we have a formal letter from our breeder confirming this, we will not be offering doggy daycare or training services. And we're happy to have this as a condition of that. Uh, we are dedicated, uh, competitors in AKC and CKC sporting events and confirmation shows. One of our dogs Wyatt is an AKC champion who is still competing while his sister Willow competes in fast cat. We are committed to training the next generation of show and sport dogs, we fully understand the municipality's regulations, we're willing to comply with any reasonable conditions set forth with this license. And we hope our proactive approach and commitment to responsible ownership demonstrates our ability to maintain a respectful and well-managed home. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, council members, do you have any questions?
Um, I had questions, but very good presentation, um, answered on barking, if it's going to be a nuisance or, uh, I, obviously, and your neighbors are aware. And I don't see a letter of opposition, so I, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Do you have a picture of these tiny little dogs?
I brought copies of my speech and all.
They might be the pictures, you'll have them all there.
They are very small. This is Wyatt. He sits on this table.
Thank you.
Uh, now, can I draw a vase?
Um, being in the dog world somewhat myself, show and, and working with German shepherds for quite a long time, I've seen some ghetto kennels. And I've seen some really nice ones, so I'm trusting, you're right across from the school?
Yes.
Okay, so there is noises going on and barking, again, from what I know about these dogs, they're, they're, they're quite, um, they're not quite, they're, they're not loud, they're relatively quiet compared to like a pack of hunters.
Yes, exactly, they're only loud when they go outside together.
Then they get, yeah, then they come back in and out. Um, you said you're gonna have four females?
We'd like to have four, we'd like to introduce, because you never know who's going to show.
Okay.
And you gotta raise them.
Yeah, so, um, they all get shipped out to the U S to, to the breeder, or is one of them welfare?
If we want, wish to breed, yes.
So you're not bringing any of those puppies back here, okay, so it's four females, one male?
No, so we have three females and a male, our males neutered, yes, we'd like to bring in four females.
At eight.
Right, to have eight.
Totally, thank you, okay, thank you. That was good, thanks.
Any other questions, my council? Okay, thank you, great presentation. That ends, we had next, that ends the conditional uses, variation orders we have done, subdivision number S twenty four three oh eight three six seventy Lockport Road, madam? Oh, I'm sorry, Council, Deputy Mayor Morecki has advised he will be excusing himself from the six seventy Lockport Road. So you can leave me, I mean. Madam Planner, could you receive?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just a second, I will share my screen. Okay, so next application is subdivision application in number S twenty four thirty eighty three on six hundred seventy Lockport Road. Um, and pro- purpose of that application is to create two additional, two new lots in AR agricultural restricted zone. So this is the allocation of the subject property. And this is a, a subdivision application map, those are two lots that propose and residual is the biggest one. So by the St. Andrews by law, if four acres and a hundred ninety eight feet requirements are met here for the whole a proposal, all three lots are in compliance. And, um, our analysis that we, that situation needs to have a zoning and developing plan, and Manitoba will require, and no other agencies raised any concerns, so, um, RRPD recommends that application be approved with the conditions. Um, RRPD recommends the following conditions, applicant owner submits confirmation writing from the municipality that taxes on the land is to be subdivided for the current year plus any areas have been paid. Payment for any, um, of any capital development leaves, has been made to, payment for the administration fee being paid. And, um, applicant owner enters into developing agreement with the municipality to address item included but not limited to an engineering, a lot grade, and drainage plan. Dedication of the public reserved lands not exceeded in 10% of the subject land, any other standards is deemed necessary by the municipality too. Applicant owner submits confirmation in writing from Manitoba Environmental Climate Change, existing surgery, injector system has been decommissioned or certified exemption has been used. They have that option because the acreage is more than 10 acres, the residual, and they can still use it, but the proposal lots on that, so they will have to go on other options. And the fourth condition, applicant owner submits written confirmation from Manitoba Hydro for the easement that they actually, um, ask for. That's it that I have for that, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, council, do you have any questions for the planner? Okay, uh, Bruce Freeman, Bruce and Diane, you're the applicants, would you like to speak to the application?
Yeah, ouch. I'm sorry. We were doing your chair, it, it, I wasn't mine. Anyway, um, my name is Bruce Freeman, we lived, uh, six seven zero Lockport Road for just about fifty years now. We moved there when it was gravel and mud, and we've got, uh, twenty one point some odd acres there, it's a big L-shaped lot, uh, mostly going down, uh, Morecki Road there, parched five hundred and ten feet on Now, what we're using is about the part of the, the front five, six acres there. The rest is bush and, and grass, and it's too big for a, for a yard, too small for a barn. Uh, we did apply about forty years ago, uh, for a subdivision because we didn't need that much land. And it was held in abeyance because of the water situation. Now, uh, we've talked to your mayor, uh, Mayor Swell, and, uh, your people about it, and, and they've been trying to do improvements on it. But being as how now, I'm, uh, just about eighty years old, we've lived there since I was thirty, and, uh, essentially, being the yard, and that's what we're talking about moving on, but moving on, we would like to keep a couple of pieces or one piece of property down the end of life. Uh, a neighbor has, uh, uh, come to me and asked me if I would, uh, be considered selling him about nine acres without going from five and four. I would be considering that too, because he wants to keep it the same as I did, just through, we have lots of deer back there, uh, there's coyotes back there, but we don't need, but they're there. But the deer are there, and it's sort of a nice, uh, we've been sitting there, uh, we watch them every so often. Uh, we've had parties out there, we used to have a swimming pool there and there, but now the roller, that's gone and covered up, uh, there. So, as I say, we're getting a little on the, uh, long in the tooth side. And we would really, really like to just get it off there, and another five, six years, we may be selling a movie, we're not sure what happens. But it's part of our plan, and, and as I say, you held it in abeyance before, due to the water now, uh, Mayor Swell, you, uh, you've been out, you've discussed this situation.
Years.
Uh, I don't know what your plans are for improvement or anything, I will leave that up to you, that's really not my business anymore. But, uh, we would appreciate it if, uh, you would allow that, even to sell to my neighbors, one of the very close neighbors that would have bought the property in the back there. Keep for his kids, just to play around and make tree forts and, uh, leave it for the deer and that, which is a good idea, and I would happily scrap the two lots and sell one to him as a nine acre lot there, just keep it open like that, uh, you don't have to have people in there, there's no hydro down there, there's no sewer water down there or, uh, so anybody that bought it would have to be thinking of the, uh, the long range plan. And if it is subject to the water there, I'm saying if I was going to sell two big acres, not two pieces of property, I would allow quite a bit of money off selling, selling price. Allow them to bring in, fill and bring up property, you know, so they wouldn't use those if they want it. Now, and that's pretty much all we can do now, and the same, we're, we're looking down the road now and, uh, up to you people, what, what you'd like to do in there.
So now I've been confused, could you clarify, so it's, uh, now like a neighbor's come forward to buy. So why are you?
I, this is what I, this is what we, uh, excuse me, Mayor, uh, we had put in, uh, we had paid the money for the planning, for the surveyors. We had paid the money for, you know, you people to, to take a look at it, and the planning board to look at it, we've tried to do what we're supposed to on this, we put up the signs and everything else, and he just came over, uh, last night. And said, I mean, I saw the sign that you're selling there, he said, see, he says, I know, I like that, I've been looking at a piece of property for a long time, I would like to have it. He has two young children there, we have young children, I heard everybody getting nighty, we're getting young people all over the place, and it's, I enjoy it. I drove school, was here for eleven years, and I only did it because I liked the young people. I didn't beat the dollars or anything out, and now we've got a nice, real nice neighbor there, and he said he wants that for his, uh, he'd like to have it for future for his kids. And, uh, I think that's a heck of a good idea, but being as how everything was already down on paper, we can't say, whoa, let's just change it straight now, so I'm just telling you what, what the plan is, you that or?
No, so I'd like to confirm with the planner, so now it's to subdivide nine acres of farm, probably split that in half. But why would we go through with this subdivision? If someone wants to buy the whole nine acres?
This is the question.
Matter be tabled or? I, just to answer your question, council pass, we had in the budget a fifty thousand dollar, um, uh, money set aside to start a drainage plant, um, but that'll take a while, because we're all familiar with, most of us are all familiar with the water situation here.
Very familiar.
But we would still need the subdivision, subdivide the main house from the nine acres.
Yes, definitely.
We don't have, but we don't.
Do I have to do this all again?
All, for now, this is what we have, what you have, and if you want to withdraw it and maybe put it on hold, or, because this been happening like yesterday? The proposal?
Yeah, it wasn't a proposal, it was just a gentleman came, uh, bred with, uh, say, two young children, hydro worker, he, he had been working everywhere, excuse me.
Um, yeah, sorry.
All right, so up to what your turn is, thank you, go ahead, do you have your hand raised for a question?
Um, so I'm assuming you've paid a lot of money to get, you paid some money to get to where we're at today?
Yes.
Okay.
A lot of money, four, five thousand dollars.
So, to answer to the conversation that you're asking, I'm thinking the same thing. Wouldn't we be better just to let it go the way it is now, in case that, that handshake doesn't go through?
Well, yeah, because you don't have a confirmed sale, like.
No, I do not have a confirmed sale, I have just a word about my neighbor coming, he's standing in my front, or my porch, and we talk.
I just need clarification, because I haven't seen this before, but I mean, so if we do, as, we have to act on the application that's before us today. So it's a five acre lot and a four acre lot, and then a subdivision off of that, well then, so if we receive that, whatever neighbor wants to do, he'd have to reapply to combine the titles or, or?
You, excuse me, Mayor, if I, if I, if you didn't approve as they stand, as the subdivision stands right now, and he wanted them, I would be more than happy to sell him two pieces of property at a monthly due to his price.
Well, we can't get into the real estate, yeah.
I want to keep it that way.
I was not aware, this stuff happened yesterday.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there will be written just two lots on the same title, and, you know, it is always not permitting to combine those, and, I mean, if we'll go, if the, the owner will go, we, to RM to, and respect some DA or caveat that he will build in the middle, or, I don't know, it's just, we're guessing for now.
But it would be up to, if it's so, it would be up to the new.
New owner, for sure.
Do all the, you're strictly here to subdivide the property, that's the bottom, okay.
Yeah.
Hey, council members, do you have, anybody have any more questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, uh, we have a number here in opposition, so if you heard that, just let me know, uh, Paul Werchick? You filed an opposition, did you want to speak to the matter?
Yeah. We're going to call Werchick, seven fourteen Lockport Road. We have nothing but drainage problems there, they've occurred for the last, since nineteen seventy nine, and they're only gotten worse. You were our council there, so you know. Uh, with every development that you are allowing in our area, and you have not allowed for any infrastructure whatsoever, so the drainage has just been getting worse. And what happens is I'm flooding worse and worse every year. And right now, most of the neighbors around our area are putting up berms. And that's just creating more flooding, and they're draining everything from the back of the Mr. Freeman's land. He put berms up, and he's got drainage there, which is adding to my flooding. And I've had, uh, Ron from maintenance there, I've had, uh, I know Dr. Najomori was there, and I think you were even there, where we showed you that, the water that comes off that back end there.
I was the council, they're very familiar, it's the bowl of the RM.
So, yeah, so with that royal crossings, all the waters coming to the back there, everybody down Lockport Road is getting flooding, everybody's putting in berms, so it's getting worse and worse every year. Now that Mr. Freeman wants to subdivide his land, if he sells it, who knows what they're going to do with it? And it's just going to create more flooding for me, so if this continues on, what, what my, uh, my plans are, go ahead, do you?
No, no, she, she has a chance to speak with, go ahead, you're speaking now.
Uh, what my plans are, if, if this goes through, I'm going to do the same thing my other neighbors are. And that's put a two footed burn by three feet wide down the east side and down the south side of my property. Because I've got no choice, even with the development on Lockport Road, six twenty four, it had a residue lot that was never to be touched. They dug the residue lot out, when we complained about it two years ago to planning board, and because they're the ones who agreed the agreement with the RM, they said it was up to the RM, we complained to the RM, the RM said it's up to the planning board. So nobody has been enforcing this, and it's just been creating more flooding. And you speak to the neighbors on our area, it's just gotten worse and worse, and like I said, if, if this goes through, and this is all swamp, I don't care what anybody says about this piece of property, I can go there in July, August, and I can still walk in a foot of water.
Any questions of Mr. Wa- Councilor Snyder?
I get the water issue to court on that, but really, truthfully, this is about a subdivision with conditional uses, if somebody else was to buy that property and do anything else with it, they would have to come before council. And then we would address the issues.
Yeah, but if you come to subdivide it, we've got to go through this whole thing again. And by that point in time, you won't have to worry about subdivision anymore in that lot, because I'm going to have that burma. And you know what, there's a lot of other people down Lockport Road that are saying the same thing, and we've been having flood after flood after flood. And your comment about that, I think that's kind of honor for you to say.
Kind of honor award for you to say that because what you're doing is telling me, too bad, so sad, what if it's got water right now and we subdivide it? It's the next guy who's got a problem with it, why are we going to that length, why are we not stopping it right now? And if Mr. Maraki was here, he knows the issue of flooding, Joy knows the issue of flooding. And it is terrible, it goes right down Lockport Road. Putting a berm up there is just going to create a disaster, and it already has because he's put the berm up already. And the drainage is coming from the back of Royal Crossings.
And that isn't, that's on Mr. Freeman's property, you know, road crossing is farther to the acres on this outside.
Yeah, but it's Mr. Freeman who put the berms up himself as well in between his two pieces of property where he wants to subdivide. And now he's letting that that drain through into the ditch into our main. We showed you that when he was bringing in the mud, that's right where the culvert is.
That part I don't remember.
Yeah, right where the culvert is on the south, south side of Maraki Road. And if you look, you'll see where his driveway is, and you'll see that there's a berm that goes that way and then goes over a bit.
Uh, Mr. Freeman, I'll let you speak at the end after all the, address all the people that have spoken, council people.
I guess just more of a comment based on the the drainage there, maybe a question for the planner. If the selling of that property was to occur in the future. Would there not be conditions that a drainage plan and there would have to be. Information about that, the land that would make sure that it wouldn't in, um, create any further flooding or damage people's properties?
We're not going to free ownership, but is there any permits will be issued there for sure? It will be addressed there at the permit stage.
And if if there is knowledge of, um, flooding or water in that area. Then would the application be denied outright that you cannot build in this area because of the the water levels?
We need to check the flood, flooding hazards there, and for sure, we can recommend not to build if there are any. And this this question more to our end because all the drainage and all that stuff connected to our end, not to ours. But still, we will pursue that during any permits that will be issued there.
Okay, when when you brought all that up, Royal Crossings was supposed to have the drainage there and never had it. On Lockport Road, they were supposed to crack the drainage and that was a real schmuzzle because it was all wrong and created more of a damage. So, and even with, like I say, where they dug the residue lot out, they were the ones who enforced it. And they were the ones who implemented it when it came to that subdivision, that was part of the subdivision. And when that lot was touched. They never came to redo anything about it, they turned around and said, well, that's the RM's responsibility. When we spoke to the RM, they said that's their responsibility. So we used to stuff like, uh, well, the next guy who buys it, we be responsible. And they'll have to enforce the conditions. Up to this day, you guys haven't enforced any conditions in our area, not one. So how can you sit here right now, any of yous? And turn around and tell me that, oh, if we subdivide it or if we allow the subdivision to go through. The planning board's going to put the conditions on, and then they don't enforce them and yous don't enforce them, so. So how can you make that comment?
How's this like her?
Sir, in in no way was I trying to insinuate any, you know, at at any further damage or that I don't care about your. What I'm trying to say is, is that from my understanding and from what you're saying. It doesn't sound like somebody could build on that piece of property from, again. The the condition in front of us or the, what's in front of us is what we're speaking about today, what you're referencing is.
I under, I understand that, and what I'm saying is like, and I understand what you're saying, I'm not telling you don't to counsel, but. Uh, I understand what you're saying, but it's never been enforced in the past, never. Uh, since nineteen seventy nine, we've done, I think, five studies on on that area and flooding. And every study has gotten lost, we've lost for them all, we spent, this council has spent like a hundred and eighty thousand dollars enough for studies. That are not to be found, they were requested, and, um. I forget guy's name who we hired last time. Uh, for, uh, did all the studies down.
John Arthur.
Was that John Arthur, and he was originally who put something in the, enforced back in nineteen seventy nine. Where he had, uh. Uh, what do you call, culvers closed off with the condition that they would be open six months later, those culvers are still blocked. So everything that every counselor here has ever told us. And when it comes to passing, uh, doing anything, yous have never come through with it. So I sit here and you can sit there, you can say, well, under conditional use, we're going to tell you, we're going to do this. It's going to be the condition, but if they're not going to enforce it because they. You're not going to enforce it because you said it was those, those people wrote it. I'm stuck in the middle, I pay my taxes, I pay your salary, and I'm the one who's stuck in the middle. Now, you can see my frustration, I'm not the only one. I mean, there's neighbors down Lockport Road that are just living right now and they're even saying, this subdivision goes through. They're putting up berms and boy, I'll tell you, it's going to be flooded right down to number eight or number seven. And if you know our area, you'd know, Joy does. They're kayaking in half my field.
Okay, council, do you have any more questions?
Yeah, I just, I just want to read out loud again that condition that we put in before approval of that subdivision. Okay, that they have to meet before the approval as a conditional approval. Um, in section number two of that we recommend a conditional that applicant enters into development agreement with municipality. To rest item included but not limited to an engineered lot grade and drainage plan approved by municipality. This is one of the conditions before approval, that means even. To get that subdivision, they will have to address that issue.
No, I understand that, but I think planning board hasn't ever looked at that because there's no place they can put drainage there, right?
Well, there has to be a drainage plan, I mean, that's why.
If not, it wouldn't be approved.
Yeah, I'm just saying that there's no place they can drain it except into my field.
Well, there is a place to drain it then.
Certainly, yeah, that's where the berm's coming. So that's all I have to say, our frustration is so bad around our area, and we're frustrated that we continue to talk. And we continue saying stuff since nineteen seventy nine, it's only got worse and worse and worse. Because I understand subdivisions, I think they're great for the communities and everything else. But you gotta put in infrastructure before you do this, I mean, now you're drawing, powering up our, uh, hardtop roads. Because you got no money for that, let alone fixing our drainage.
Okay, now we're dealing with this, thank you.
Yeah.
Tom Sampson?
Yeah. Hi, I'm Tom Sampson, member of the community for forty years. Six five four Lockport Road, Mr. Morecki was here, I'd like to talk to him, but he won't talk to me. And Joy, we've met quite a few times. The drainage isn't real issue, our back property is flooded every single spring. We watch the ducks, we go with our hip waders, run our dogs. Uh, four years ago, my neighbor and I were canoeing out there, the water was up to here. And that's going right to fragments, I mean, they don't know that shit. It's ridiculous, and I know you guys have addressed this before, we're going to address the issue of the drainage, it's never been done. You've cleaned out the ditches, you've cleaned out the the ditch going east or west and ends the south. And then the the culvers, maybe the culvers, it helped, it did help. But as far as the subdivision goes, where would you put a house on a swamp? It would have to be like the neighbor down the road east of us, they built the house ten feet tall, right? And where do you put a septic field in a swamp? How? Holding tanks? This hole?
See, again, as the partner said, we're dealing with subdividing off from the main house. Okay, there's no complication for us, for a house, for a new house to be put up, anything. It's too, my understanding was, actually, well, still is, Mr. Freeman put in the application. To to settle his affairs, to get his affairs in order, to subdivide it all. Any new person coming in, if it's a subdivision, say he was going to leave to his children or that's why he's doing it. But anybody new takes over that property, it's just something from his property. Anyone taking over would have to appear, file an application with Red River Planning, it would have to come to council. And I understand.
By that time, I'll be eighty or eighty-five. It'll never happen.
Oh, I won't be yet though, but I'll remember.
As far as Freeman goes, I've known him for forty years, I've got no qualms about, you know, subdivisions. I wouldn't mind that property, it's just a walk-in. It's a, we've been for years, it's, uh, it's beautiful in there, like you said, the deer, the coyotes. We've seen dead coyotes, we've seen all kinds of things, gee, it's a nice property, it is, I can see why it's never once.
But see, that's why we're dealing with just to subdivide, we're not dealing with a house permit or a development application or anything like that.
And I, and I have to clarify even more than that, those conditions that we wrote right now, they're for Mr. Freeman. Not for the new owner, this is conditional, uh, conditions to approve that subdivision before any new owner. So to be that subdivision being approved, because it will, if it will be approved right now, it will be approved conditionally. And only after meeting all of the conditions that we are mentioning here, they will get it.
I'll be awful, awful to my them, that's okay. I've had, I've had.
And they have two years to.
If you have anything new to add?
Hi, evening, council. I'm neighbors between mediator between Tom and Bruce. Uh, not much to say other than what Tom said, but just looking for better drainage. I've been there for six years and the first three years, not much water. Last two years, no snow, but all the water. So I don't know how it's coming, what's blocked, but I shouldn't be able to canoe in a field. Yeah, here, here, and yeah, I'm all support if he wants to subdivide, I'm in full support if there's proper drainage.
Okay, council, any questions?
Just could you read out then what all the conditions? That you said you just added to, but I didn't catch the wording you were using. I thought she said she just added to.
Okay, thank you. Alex Centalik, do you have anything new to add or you'd like to speak?
She's over Zoom.
Hi, yeah, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, um, so, good evening, um, my name is Alex, I am actually the neighbor at seven zero four Lockport Road. Um, and we are right next to Mr. Werrischek's field. A right on the kitty corner pretty much of Morecki, Lockport kind of S curve there. Um, we actually didn't know, um, about the potential, um, interest of. Uh, Mr. Bruce to divide the lots, we thought he was just, you know, down the road going to sell the entire property as a whole. Uh, but we found out the potential of sectioning off his section of the prop, the twelve acres and then getting, um, the other two lots subdivided. We were only notified through the RM's letter that was sent in the mail and the second we received it. Uh, myself and my husband Brett, who was, um, on Zoom here earlier as well, actually approached, um. Uh, Bruce about the potential sale of that property to us. Because we do not want to see residential homes go up there because of the drainage issues. So I know that's a separate thing about, you know, rezoning, not sorry, not rezoning, but subdividing. You know, the twelve acres and leaving it as eight and potentially then selling that, we just are here in, um, support of. Being able to subdivide that lot, but then potentially being able to just purchase it and leave it as is. We don't want to see any of that nature lost because all those trees and shrubs obviously absorb a lot of water. And we know that there's an issue with drainage as we have lived here a long time as well. So we are the people who have approached Bruce to potentially buy that land, so if that gives any of our neighbors some peace of mind. We have zero desire to build any sort of building on that property, um, but that's, that's not the purpose of this meeting. I just wanted to bring up that we were those people. Um, and, but we only found out about the potential to be able to acquire that land because of this notice. So we just don't want to be able to see other buildings go up in that potential land. Um, because of the drainage issues, so I just wanted to add in, um, you know, who we are and and what was that. Uh, approach for sale.
Okay, thank you, council, do you have any questions or comments, okay, thank you, um, I also see Brett, is he with you?
Uh, he's actually putting one of the kids to bed, so he had to, he had to go, so I had, I am speaking on behalf of both of us. But yes, we just wanted to clarify that confusion as I know that, that that then affects, you know, the application and whatnot and how this goes. But we just wanted to also be good, like I said, give our neighbors around us some peace of mind that. Potentially, if we are able to subdivide that lot and break it apart from Bruce's property of the twelve acres. There would be no other application for, for a zoning or or anything to build any lots there because we would just leave it as is.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alvin Spior, did you want to speak to the application?
I'm Alex Felix Spatter Eagle Lockport Roads, I'm living in the area for fifty-four years and I've watched the area develop. And that particular lot is saturated in water every year, every spring. I can't see anybody want to build on that property, and why would anyone want to buy a property that's flooded? And we, you know, we're very poor communities in that area, and you're just going to add to the problem.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody have a question? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I've got Tom Sampson again. And everyone's spoken to the application. Mr. Freeman, would you like to address some of the concerns brought up?
Anyway, I just wanted to say like, uh, Mr. Werrischek had stated that everybody around down the road, it's for burns around their yard. Around their yards, they haven't, there's two, I think, three people that have, and a couple of them were subsidized by the municipality. Uh, because they were in low land, it was all sold before, they didn't know anything about that. And they were getting flooded badly, so, uh, there was berms put around their yard, down farther down Lockport Road and also on Morecki Road. Um, I don't know the addresses right now, I can go look them up for you if you wanted, but it's got about three, three places. One other place pumps the water across the road from the south side to the north side to run down there. Uh, as I say, uh, uh, Ms. Mayor, you, uh, you've been down there, you realize what all this is. Now, Mr. Werrischek had a lot of good things to say and a lot of bad things to say, but consider Mr. Werrischek. Came to my place when you were running for office, mayor. He came to my place and sadly, I have a petition, I think to sign here. I'm getting names for Mayor Soul or for Joy Soul to run for mayor. So really, yeah, well, we're for her, I said, I'll do it, my neighbor will do this over here, and we did. We then found out later on that, uh, Mr. Werrischek had the thing signings for Mr. Werrischek. I brought it to you and.
Yes, I remember that, but that's got nothing to do with.
That's nothing to do with it, I'm just talking about credibility here, you know, really. And everybody seemed to be talking about using this as a platform for water. Uh, we've been playing with this water thing for over fifty years. Mr. Werrischek also put in subdivision there to have his property subdivided for an extra five, they, and he was refused. And it wasn't to do with the water, he wanted it upfront, but that's neither here nor there, but just for your consideration. Now, this one here, when I talked to my neighbor, I just, I told you the reason why I wanted to get solid. If I sell my property as it is, I will get, save a lot of money. If I sell my property again, it is, I will get, save a lot of money. Uh, and if I split it, now if I split it, a couple of dollars in my back pocket, fine, it's not gonna break me either way. But somebody down there, with two young children, that are only, uh, I think one is about four, the other's just a little baby girl, that's Brett and, uh, his friend. Uh, he wants that for, uh, an inheritance sort of for his children, now he's not gonna give that to in two years, three years. He wants to be able to go in there, run around and play and make sports, like I did when I was a kid, there was nothing but trees behind our, I grew up in St. Pedeau. And there was nothing but bush behind our place, black wood was in that, we ran there like loads of little Indians, you know, many forests.
Say, because.
Yes, yes, you know, I'm sorry, I, I keep, uh, running on. But anyways, as for the water, the burr in, uh, through my property, there's no burrs on my property. At the thing where the, my second driveway is, I had a bunch of, uh, uh, a fill brought it to my place when they were giving away free fill, dumped at the back, we'll end it with mounds and humps. I had it straightened out and leveled out there, so then it's raised up there on one piece, the other still gets flooded. But I had about fifteen, ten, fifteen loads, well, so I make a little along the roadway there, and I can plant some trees. That's the only reason, and it's, hey, you can go around that and you can go around this end.
Okay.
So it's not a burden to block any water.
Thank you.
I haven't been doing, you know, trying to keep water out of other people's place, I could. Think I make a burn around the back of my place, but you don't do that to your neighbors.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, anything further on this? Okay. Everyone's spoken to that matter, that puts us in. We have no more public hearings, okay? Be resolved that the Council hereby close the public hearings for February eleventh, twenty twenty-five planning applications. Could I have a mover, please? Councillor Slaker, seconder. Councillor Mandor. All in favor? Harry, I see Councillor Hudson in favor. Many have to go back hopefully to vote. Okay, now we have next item four point six. Um, resolution for decision of conditional use number thirty-seven two oh two four. Whereas the applicant owner of roll number six oh three nine hundred has made application for additional use number thirty-seven two oh two four. For the drum premises described as West twelve seventeen three East Road. The purpose is to establish a small heavy-duty repair component that focuses on trucks and other farming vehicles. The conditions were read out by the planner, um, and they were on the screen. I have condition number one to eight, there was no changes. But when it was up. When we got our agenda package, there was no other changes, it's still the one table, okay, thank you. Could I have a mover, please?
I'll move that.
Uh, Councillor Hudson, seconded by Councillor Dornboss, will be of discussion on this, any comments? Yeah, all the conditions are laid out with planner, uh, we'll draw to the vote, all those who stay there.
Aye.
Very interesting anonymous, um, your application is approved. Item four point seven. Resolution for decision on conditional use one dash two oh two five. Whereas the applicant owner of tax roll number three three two nine hundred has made application for conditional use number one dash two oh two five for the premises described as eight oh three Fort Gary Road. The purpose is to establish an event venue that focuses on wedding bridal, bridal and a group of three birthdays and similar family events. The planner, well, we'll put this underneath the mover and just go, uh, second to get this on the table, could I have a mover, please? Councillor Marecki, seconded by Councillor Dornboss. Okay, now the planner. The conditions were on the screen, we'll go around the table, uh, for comments. On, um, is. Councillor Dornboss?
Start with me?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, I got a few concerns here. First one would be traffic, and, uh, again, you know, highway eight, highway sixty-seven, even two thirty and sixty-seven pulling up. You're coming down that area there, that's a lot of traffic, uh, on weekends, there's people coming back from beaches. Um, my worry is that there'll be, uh, larger influx of accidents. Uh, noise is also an issue, and I empathize with every one of these residents who live by there because I went to this state a couple of years ago. Where every weekend there was something going on, and, uh, it was not fun, it was actually annoying and horrible, put it to, to say the least, so. Uh, those are the two things that are my biggest concerns about this point in time. Um, I think the business owner is extremely smart and, uh, she's got a good hat on her shoulders and, uh, I hope for the best for her, but, uh, we'll see what goes here.
Yes, thank you, yes, thank you, uh, I guess a number of things here, um. Um, again, one thing that jumps out is the, uh, the amount of, um, noise emanating from the building. Um. Uh, the, uh, the developers, um, have indicated that they want to put a, uh, a false ceiling, a false ceiling tile, and that would mitigate, uh, quite a bit of noise because I um, know that there's a, um, just a metal roof on top of it. And that would, uh, certainly, uh, act as a buffer. Uh, however, I do sympathize. Um, yeah, you probably didn't hear some stuff. Um, definitely, uh, uh, different, if I can say that. Uh, the other thing, uh, I just kind of want to reiterate is that these type of operations are not something new to St. Andrews. Uh, uh, again, we have Rossdale Hall, we have the Croatian Club, we have Little Britain. They're all doing the same things that these folks are doing, and they've all been doing that for a very, very long time, sixty-seven plus years. So, uh, yeah, that's all I have to say right now, uh, just pass it on here.
Do you have any comments, like if some of you don't have any?
No, no, I, like, so I, I, I look at this venue and I'd look at other venues that are similar in nature, offering, uh, states on a gravel road, accesses off of the highway, most of the same amount of people, uh, vehicles roughly. They're going probably till one AM or two AM, they're only eleven PM. Um, the traffic though is, is a concern, now I know that we have the current study, um, that's um, on the province right now that they're addressing and looking at. So I, I would imagine that this would obviously add to, uh, potentially what they're looking at for the engineering and the, what the capacity or the safety issues they want to address at that intersection. Um, it would, would, would help that we have the study in place. They indicated they're gonna have better signage, so I, I would think that that would reduce or mitigate any of the traffic that's not gonna go down other gravel roads. There's a lot of what ifs that were thrown out, I mean, I, I know we have other, like you mentioned, um, halls. On Wood Petersfield, Little Britain, they're all within communities, they're older buildings, they don't have the soundproofing like what is being presented here. Um. Trying to think. Yeah, those are kind of my comments right now, I, I've addressed some, I still have, I, I think some concerns, but.
Thank you, Councillor Slaker.
Um. If we did this, I would want to put a conditional use timeframe on it, bring it back, back to date. The way I'm looking at this is, without the conditional use. They can't go forward, they can't put the sound insulation in, signage, like, none of that stuff can get done. Until they get this conditional use. Is mine, the way I'm looking at it, and the RM controlled conditional uses, just like Councillor Hunt said earlier. We can put a timeframe on it, we can revoke it at any time. For this council, we have a full-time bylaw out there now. With updated written bylaws and all that kind of stuff, we're way ahead of ourselves. And the other thing I truly believe that I didn't think of before until you, Mr. Deputy Mayor Marecki said it. Is, yeah, I've been to socials at Little Britain, Croatian, Rossdale Hall. Yeah, there's people that live all around those places, and yeah, those didn't shut down until two in the morning back in my day. And that with all traffic coming up onto the highways, so.
Councillor Hunt, do you have comments?
Yes, I do, yes, similar comments, like I say, we have uh, eight or ten halls in, in St. Andrews, Clan de Boy, Petersfield, Netley, Matlock, and those are all in, in, um, resident, residential areas, and a, a function of norm, normality would be, you know, sixty, seventy cars. And there's never any problems with accidents or noise concerns for those communities. I'm in favor of this application, I'm in favor of development, and I voted in favor of it last time, for the record. Uh, it was mentioned that there was unanimously against, but I did vote in favor of it, and I'll be voting in favor of it again. Um, I think it's good for the community, it's on a highway, it's regulated, like to say, fifty, sixty vehicles per day. Uh, sixty-seven probably takes, you know, I, I wouldn't even want to guess, you know, two, three thousand vehicles per day. Um, but like I say, to move it, to say move it to these other, other communities, uh, it is going in those communities and, and there's not issues, issues, issues with those communities or with noise. Um, like I say, Clan de Boy, Petersfield, Netley, Matlock, they're all surrounded by residential areas. As was mentioned, Rossdale, Little, Little, like Little Britain, there's numerous houses around Little Britain Hall, or Rossdale Hall, and it's on uh, one of our roads, which is not a two-lane road, it's a, it's a mun- it's a, it's a municipal road, never any issues, so, again, I'm in favor, thank you.
Do you, Councillor Mandor, do you have comments?
Uh, I think I've said a lot, but, uh, we're talking about two different types of buildings here too. We're talking about, uh, these halls that are, uh, insulated, uh, walls, ceilings and whatnot, I would think. Uh, drywall on the inside, uh, this has nothing, this is a barn with the, uh, exterior with some panels on the top. Uh, we have a history here of this piece of property for the last couple of years, uh, being a problem. Uh, we have almost every single resident here from the surrounding area in opposition and, uh, I voted last time against, I will be, uh, I don't, I don't approve of this application again.
Thank you, I'll say my piece. Um, you know, Council and I listen, listen to everything the residents say. And we agree, and it's, we're always not in my backyard, and I was listening, I, I'm impressed with the applicant by listening to all the concerns by the residents and going over, above and over, beyond addressing all the concerns with soundproofing with the Google issue with signage, like it goes on and on, and like you're correct, Mr. Marecki, this isn't new to St. Andrews, I kept thinking at this, thinking the whole time about Hawthorne, the St. City South. The homes are just as close, maybe a little bit further away, there's no issues. Um, I think, Council, we need to look at the economic benefits and what will our job is to represent, look out for the best interest that would create for the whole order. And, um, unfortunately, this, some, the process started without following the rules, and that puts Council in a bad position. But now you're correcting everything, um, that was an issue with the last one. So I personally, I, um, I, I'm in favor of a new venue like this and seeing the picture, this could be a showcase. St. Andrews one with the other compulsory. Was there any further comments? Okay.
Uh, no, I just have one comment, I, I would really like to go. Conditions placed on.
Yeah, that was next. Okay, right now, the conditional use is limited to what has been presented in the application. Many further changes, replacements or additions would require a new conditional use approval. Hours of operation shall be limited from twelve PM to one PM, Saturdays and Sundays only. All signage must comply with the municipality zoning bylaw. Use of the property must comply with the municipality's noise bylaw. Vehicle co- vehicle parking must be contained on-site as per the submitted site plan. And adhere to parking requirements of the RM zoning bylaw. Parking along Fort Gary Road and Linklater Road is prohibited. Applicant owner must obtain an annual business license from the RM. What other conditions, um?
Madam Chair. Uh, the seventh condition that was added is no occupancy or use of structures. And proceed until such time as all required permits are successfully obtained from the Red River Planning District and the RM of St. Andrews. That was the seventh, um, the amendment to the, uh, package, that was the seventh condition.
Okay. And again, this is a conditional use for your bylaw, there's breaches to the manic candy council in any time.
I, I don't, uh, on behalf of the neighbors, I, I think that, that is the one thing I think that, I, I feel that we all, if we put that in, and.
Well, this will be covered under the bylaw, so we don't need this for the. Okay, any further comments? Councillor Marecki?
Do we have a review after a, a period of time?
Well, that would be the conditional use after two years, they have to come back in to review everything that they're doing.
Mm-hmm. Is that possible?
You will have to put it as a, as a condition, though.
Okay, so then we can put it as number eight.
Mm-hmm.
Conditional use subject to council review. Um. Review. At the two-year period.
Or it can be before.
Well, that would, we would look at it if, that would be one of the conditions we found up the bottom.
Yeah.
So, what is your standard wording, conditional use subject to council?
I think we can recycle the same one, the previous decision that they've been there, so the conditional approval is valid for a period of two years expiring in whatever month it you will decide, two years, subject to extension, that's it. And you have gone about revoking the council's subject to bylaw enforcement complaints. May revoke the conditional use within two years' approval period.
Well, I think within the review, because then we would hear what it all.
Yeah, so.
The standard condition that we've had compared to the conditions. Any further comments by Council?
There's no way to include any type of the traffic?
But I think, uh, we can, uh, the council approval, I'll drop the letter, um, with this traffic study, so it goes in and um, let them know we passed this conditional use and perhaps then they, but while they're in the design process, they'll consider lights at eight and sixty-seven.
Um, outside security.
No, they'll, we'll know that, that is pretty much covered under number eight. Okay, we're ready to vote, all those in favor? All.
Aye.
Favor, but for all those opposed, the matters carried. Item four point eight. Resolution decision for conditional use number two two oh five. Whereas the applicant owner of tax roll two two four five period is cleared applications. The purpose is to describe as one thirty Lockport Road. The purpose is to establish a chemical license that would allow the property owner to receive the current limit of animals permitted in the home. Um, now it was item number, the conditions were all in the strange book in our pocket. The applicant's identity was eight minutes of animals, but as our planner has indicated, he put, let, put it to ten. Is that fine with everyone?
I would like to see eight, I know how much, and get out of hand if you have a little bit too much, I know that was just a number you threw in there, but.
Eight and I, I think that's what the applicant.
Uh, Councillor, uh, has a four? No, Miss, interruptions are against the bylaws.
Uh, eight, eight would be a, a good number for me, um, I would like a little bit less, but, uh, since well, that she's very well into the dogs and she's, seems like a good. well, that she's very well into the dogs and she's seems like extremely good owner. And when you get to the high-level breeding, it's uh it's uh it's way up there, so I eight would be fine.
And eight, eight is a gribble?
The only thing that I wanted to add is that sometimes if we get two dogs that um aren't showing, right, then they stay with us, and so I'm not getting any younger. So you know what it's like to run the rig. So I would like to be able to and even have that conditional license for like an amount of time. Because I may want to have that ten, but only because we have to cycle through. So we're kind of at the end of the career for doing it.
I get it, that's fine.
So you're.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay, for tip.
May I ask one more question?
No, because the public hearing is.
Got it.
Sorry, just need confirmation on that. Um any further comments on this, Counselor? You're good?
I'm I'm good with the up.
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, could I have a mover, please? Counselor Dornbaugh, second there. Counselor Slicker. All in favor? All opposed? Counsel Merkki?
Yeah.
You have the vote. You want me to start the hearing alone?
No.
Okay, whereas the applicant owner of tax rule two two four five thirty has made applications for conditional use two dash two oh two five for the premises located at one thirty Lockport Road. The purpose is to establish a kennel license that would allow the property owner to exceed current limit of animals permitted in the home. Therefore, be it resolved that conditional use number two dash two oh two five be hereby approved by counsel with the following conditions. They were on the screen, in our package, and number two was, um that's for council decision, it was first aid, but now uh Counselor Dornbaugh brought it up, it was confirmed. Everybody so far is happy with ten, what was in there mentioned originally.
In favor.
All those opposed? It's carried unanimously. Who's talking to me? Uh resolution for decision for subdivision number S twenty-four three oh eight three. Whereas the applicant owner of tax rule number two four four seven hundred has made application for proposed subdivision S twenty-four three oh eight three for the premises described as six seventy Lockport Road. The purpose is to subdivide the subject property of twenty-one point six six eight, six six acres into two additional lots in the AR agricultural restricted zone. Therefore, be resolved, council will approve the subdivision application with the following conditions. Now, all the app, the uh all the conditions have been needed by the planner, they've been on our screen and they're in our package. Does anybody want to see any further conditions? Okay, could I have a mover, please? Counselor Slicker, second there.
Sure, I'll go in.
Counselor Dornbaugh, okay, comments? Or you wish to proceed to the vote?
So I based on just focusing on what's in front of us here in in terms of obviously, this is just for this subdivision and uh uh creating the uh the additional lots, um the planner, she you did mention that within those conditions that you're gonna read out, that it indicates that a drainage plan must adhere in order for the sale of the property or just to have this divisional split, it needs to meet that, okay?
Exactly. This is a conditional approval.
Right.
Right after the condition is met, then it will be final approval. So the owner of the land, not the new one, will have to go and meet those conditions.
Counselor Slicker.
So my question to that if when you take the next step of the neighbor calling and then saying that they would like to buy it. There would be no drainage required, they just want to leave it.
No, that's not before. Yeah, but that's got nothing to do with.
Well, but just a moment, it is built into one of the conditions here. So my question is, why would the people that own it bulk up and and meet this condition if the neighbors are going to buy it to leave it in the exact same state that it is in? So my question is, is there something Brayden can do or RRPD can do that would allow that to be removed should it be bought as one standing land?
Yeah, but see, one of the conditions is, we passed the subdivision today and manor planner can confirm is to subdivide the lots. Whether it's settling to a neighbor, nothing's got nothing to do with it. This subdivision cannot be approved until all these conditions are met.
Again, it cannot.
That are here on the screen. And there has to be the preparation of a development agreement. This will all be contained within a development agreement.
Correct.
Thank you.
So I I think maybe I'm I'm my understanding what you're saying is then he'll never be able to sell this land, because in order to sell it, he has to build the land up.
Right, and why would he if the neighbor gonna buy it to make it a tree fort for her to little child? So is there a loophole in the development?
Am I, am I understanding that correct, that in order for this gentleman to sell the property, a drainage plan would have to be, and that could costs, I don't know.
That cost a lot of money.
We're not dealing with any, in the connection to selling, that's first. For that subdivision approval, he will require
Yeah.
to go with the.
Okay, so the selling of the land is separate from the.
Separate, definitely.
No, it's not, it all goes together.
Counselor Slicker, please wait your turn to talk. I'm talking over other people.
Hey, very nice.
I uh again, it's it's a delicate balance, because it's a subdivision and not to sale the land. But the sale of land was brought up with the subdivision, so this is where the confusion is happening there, so um you know, it's it's swap land, that's basically what it is, it's just, it's just waterlogged land. And it's pretty much useless to anybody, um no offense. But at the end of the day, um that's what we're doing, we're dealing with the subdivision of what's in front of us, nothing else.
Counselor Slicker?
But you have a drainage plan attached to the subdivision. I'm not understanding where where you're going with that.
Uh engineered lock grade or drainage plan approved by the municipality. So applicant owner is a gentleman reading to municipality, address items including but not limited to an insured let, great uh lock grade drainage plan approved by the municipality, dedication, blah, 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 so. Okay, so that would mean Mr. Freeman, once he's, once it's finished, has to be able to uh make sure that the drainage on that land is feasible to the RPD, okay?
Before final approval.
Okay.
Before.
Yep.
Counselor Slicker?
Before final approval of the subdivision.
Yeah.
That you're taking that property off of the main one.
Yes, okay.
Or you have something?
I can help clarify things here, so the condition here is to enter at the development agreement, doesn't say to construct swales or install culverts or install drainage, there needs to be an engineered drainage plan in place for the property to show where the water would go if it's developed. He could enter that and it'd be registered on the property as a caveat, anybody who purchases the property has to abide by that caveat. The physical work does not need to be completed. There's been a lot of discussion on drainage, we want to go one step further, on the condition, we can also require a stormwater management plan. The level of water that's currently on the property could not be exceeded post-development, once you start including roofs, uh downspouts, swales, drainage ditches, all the water gets consolidated into specific areas and not no longer spread out with natural drainage. Engineers can come up with designs through restrictor culverts, flow retention ponds, you name it, I'm not an engineer, but they would come up with the design, they'd have their stamp and seal on that plan. The RM would review and approve it. And then that would be in the development agreement, registered on the property, whoever buys it. If Mr. Freeman continues to own it, et cetera, whoever. I hope that helps to clarify.
Drainage just isn't necessarily going to a culvert right away, drainage could be uh you know, engineers can come up with different plans for relief skates or retention pond or or things that we're not even aware of, right, so it doesn't necessarily mean draining off the property or building the property up.
Thank you. You have a good question. Counselor Hunt?
Yeah, yeah, I have a comment, so the neighbor expressed interest in purchasing the four or five acres that they purchased it and added to it to their existing title. Uh then obviously, you can't build on that land, because there's already one dwelling on it. So would that eliminate the need for an engineered drainage plan for that lot? Because obviously, the house on the lot that they're adding to would would be sufficient. Like we've, you know, they're they're not gonna buy it and keep it as as a separate lot, they're just gonna add it to that title.
Uh no, Counselor Hunt, I believe the people you're talking about want to buy it. They live across the street.
Oh, okay, okay, I thought it was next door, okay, okay.
Okay, any further comments? Question? Okay, it was moved by Counselor Slicker, seconded by Counselor Dornbaugh, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, Counselor, um sorry.
Oh.
Deputy Mayor Merkki abstained, you're not in the view of our excuse from the hearing. I will vote in favor. Okay, anybody opposed? Matters carried. Next then, we have subdivision number S twenty-two two nine five six amendment, it's a non-public hearing. Madam Planner, could you please proceed, please?
For sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll just share my screen. Okay. So this is subdivision application number S twenty-two twenty-nine aim twenty-nine uh fifty-six, an amendment of the previous subdivision had been postponed. So we waited for new SAM and actually, the owners uh with the new SAM and new can new consolidation try to um avoid variances and to comply with the zoning by law and also option to leave a septic field, I will continue about that later, so the purpose of that application is to adjust the boundaries, so we're coming with two lots and going out with two lots, that's why there is no additional lots, there's only boundaries adjustment. From uh the current uh titles that we have, I'll show the map of the current one to the lot one and two, that will be um two and one point forty-five acres in our our rural residential zone. So this is the um the actual situation now, the current uh as you can see, there is one big lot and one uh smaller one under that. And the subdivision application map shows the new boundary adjustment that that little one will be consolidated with a big one and the proposed lot number two will be created at the north northwest side of the property. So both of the lots are in compliance to the zoning by law, that's supposed to be one point thirty-three acres and a hundred ninety-eight feet long uh wide. And I'm, as I mentioned before, this is an amendment of the previous uh application that was in twenty-two and the purpose of amendments to bring lot size into compliance and keep the septic field that already exists on the property. So RRPD recommends that application be approved with the conditions by applicant owners submit um confirmation in writing from the municipality stating that taxes on the land to be subdivided for the current year plus any areas have been paid, payment of any capital development leaves has been made, payment of the administration fee and service deposit required by the bylaw for the preparation of development agreement and related charges too. Um applicant owner enters into six-meter-wide drainage easement with our REM for the existing Johnson drain outlet through the property to the Red River. And applicant owner enters into development agreement with municipality to address items included but not limited to dedication of three uh thirty meters wide rear buffer along the Red River, measured island inland from the ordinary high watermark, restriction development to promote natural vegetation growth and stabilized tanks, dedication of the public reserve lands not exceeded, not exceeding in a ten percent of the subject land or payment in in lieu and any other standard deemed um necessary by the municipality by applicant to submit written confirmation from RRPD to the RRPD from the Manitoba Hydra about the easement that they require and also the central gas easement too. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, counsel, do you have any questions? Maybe resolve the council hereby approve subdivision application S twenty-two two nine five six, the amendment with following conditions read out by the planner. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Slicker, seconded by Deputy Mayor Merkki, any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie, Counselor, monitor, did you?
No, I didn't, I'm opposed.
You're opposed?
Yeah.
Could you please say when you're opposing?
Well, you didn't say who's opposed to, I would have raised my hand.
Okay, but you always, sometimes people go, it's a vote, it's so hard to watch with Counselor Hunt up there. Um but I'd appreciate if you do that, thank you. That matters carried, item number four point one one by law. Zoning by law amendment number four four oh eight, first reading, this is a non-public carry. Um Madam Planner, would you like to proceed, please?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is zoning by law amendment application number forty-four eh zero eight on three two two Parkdale Road. And the purpose of that rezoning is to rezon the subject property from AR agriculture restricted to M one general industrial zone. Here we can see the subject property, a air location map. And this is the zoning, current zone, zoning map in on the property, as you can see, all around is already M one that exists. And it's something like a hundred twenty-two acre around it on along the rear yard of it. And RRPD recommend they recommends that first reading been given eh to the bylaw, allowing a public hearing to be scheduled and our office to conduct further research, including referring the application to commoning agencies. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Uh the, this council, any questions, do you have a point? Counselor people, correct?
Uh so this is to build a shop on the on an existing property with the residents that hung?
Um, this is not the the why it's been a rezoned, it's just they want to in the future somehow uh develop some um.
The line there, it says future shop.
Yeah.
Period.
Well, let me see, they, they said it.
Move the.
An RTM that they put uh put up a few years ago.
Yeah, they stated in in um intend that multi-use shop for truck, for trucking and construction industry, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
They made sure no, they're using for an office, they're not, they just want to rezon. So we have to give it first reading, get it on the table, so then it can start public hearing.
I was just confused by the Google image and the his picture, that's okay.
Google maps are terrible. Okay, be resolved by council, get first reading to zoning by law amendment number four four oh eight as presented, could I have a mover, please? Counselor Dornbaugh, second there. Counselor Slicker, any further comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Matters carried. Okay, that ends our planning. Fortunately, I would request a five-minute reset. Is that fine with everybody, take twenty-three, how about we resume at eight thirty?
Sure.
Seven minutes. Thank you.
Recording.
Hugh, um, is he recording?
Yep.
Going. Thank you. We're reconvening at eight-thirty-two PM. Five-point-one draft January fifth council meeting minutes. Be resolved the council adopt January twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-five council meeting minutes as presented. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Dornboss, secondar. Counselor People Corn?
Could I make a small, could I make a small adjustment?
Yes.
On, under, under six-point-six on council reports, Counselor Hunt, could I put, add, instead of no report, add no external activities to report?
No. No external committees to report?
No, no external activities to report. Thank you.
And I have, uh, there was an omission, uh, before in camera. If you could please amend the minutes to read. Mayor Sewell and Counselor Hunt did not participate in the in-camera session. Any further comments? All in favor? Opposed? That is Carrie. I'm not a mayor. I'm just going to amend that so that it says as amended. Oh, yes, thank you. Yes, of course. As amended. We have no reception of delegations or petitions by laws and policies. Bylaw number four-three-seven-seven organizational bylaws attached. I'm advised Counselor Sniker has to be put on the agenda. Would you like to speak in manner, please?
Yes, we, I would like to have the, um, portion added back in for when the committee's listing is made that it must be passed by a resolution of council. We had it in there before and come however we've lost it, so I'd like that put back in.
Well, I, I can comment on that. Um, you were, and I thank you. When you first elected, when this was coming up, I have the emails where the much discussion took place between yourself and me and some of the other council members were advised under the municipal procedure manual files, uh, municipal procedures manual. It can be either put in as it was by resolution of council or cannot. And it was changed. We're fully aware of the council members were, that was put in when the mayor, when the mayor duties were resorted back to me by new council. That had everything to do with the MPR race track. When the Republican cried to have the two members on that board removed. I put that forward to the last council. It couldn't be because they had them. And that is why that change was made and everybody was aware. The majority of you I know remain aware. I don't put back you were.
I, I would like to have it put back in.
And for what reason?
So that it, uh, it's agreed upon thing all around for everybody.
So it's a removal of an AORO duty?
It's not a removal, ma'am. You get to make the list, but it has to be. I've checked with other IRM, most other IRMs do it with the resolution of council.
Again, it's in that we followed the municipal procedures on that.
I understand that. I understand that. But I'm questioning if we put it back in.
So, okay, so that will be a council decision if we amend the bylaw or not.
Right.
I personally am not going to support removing duties for native council. And I also should note, if you're not aware, as the bylaw reads, the mayor makes the committee appointments and appoints a deputy mayor by the first week, first meeting of the new year. Considering I don't, there might be one change. Possibly one change made for deputy mayor in December, last meeting of December or first meeting of January. But being in October twenty-twenty-six is the next election, committee appointments are not changed in an election year. Great. So just so council aware. So you had your?
Yes, um, so I, I understand what you're saying in terms of, I, I don't think the wording would be to remove any type of mayor, mayoral duty or anything like that. From our last meeting, when we took, when we spoke about the, um, the committees and that, um, you know, I, I heard from other residents that, you know, it wasn't, it didn't look like we were, you know, cohesive council that day in terms of just trying to figure out and making sure we, we all wanted to be fair. And there was no, um, none of us had any, you know, where our best intentions were that we just wanted to see it as a fair process that we could talk amongst each other, see who had, um, and I understand that, you know, you would make those, you know, to determine that somebody would be fit for that committee. I respect that. Um, I, I do see that it would be, I think, beneficial to have it as, that we agree on committees to some extent. Um, whether it would be something that was put forward like you did. Um, and, you know, if there was changes that could be made, then we could talk about it. That would be my only thing to, just from looking at our last meeting when we spoke about committees.
And does any other further comment?
Counsel, send up.
Counselor Hunt?
So in saying that, the, the original resolution that we passed in November of twenty-twenty-two had that line in it, that all, all appointments must be approved by resolution of council. When we did second and third reading, it was not in there in March of twenty-twenty-three. There was no line through it. There was no inkling, there was no discussion that we did in November of twenty-two saying it was going to be coming out. There was no discussion of that, of that magnitude. And there was no line through it when we did the, um, second and third reading in, in March of twenty-three. And even as it is now, if you read it, it says on prior first council meeting on and on and on, the mayor shall submit a recommendation to council for appointments of external organizations listed in schedule B. Now, when we had that last meeting about the external committee appointments, recommendations went, um, out the window. Uh, at the last meeting, you even said, this is what it is, and there's no discussion. So to me, that's not recommendation. Look in the dictionary, what recommendation says. It says put forward, you know, someone or something with approval as being substitute or particular propose of the role. It's, it's working together. They even give examples. For recommendation to hire more staff was accepted by the board. I took the recommendation to visit the restaurant and it was fantastic. The recommendation to improve customer service was implemented immediately. Can you give me a recommendation for a good book to read? Recommendations when people discuss stuff. There was no discussion last time. And even when it was discussion about individuals not wanting to go on certain committees, the individual wanted on it, those, those discussion wasn't, um, wasn't adhered to. So recommendation, some people should learn the definition of recommendation first, but I agree, that should be put back in there because I think some of us, or most of us were hoodwinked, even myself, by that one. Because there was no inkling that it was being taken out when we did second and third reading. And, uh, if that was in there, it would have, it would have created, it would have eliminated the issues that we had at the meeting where the committee appointments were made. So I'm in favor of putting it back in.
Well, there's no resolution attached. This, the bylaw will have to be given for second and third reading. And this is for council discussion, but unfortunately today, the only copies I have here in my presence are the signed dated copies. I know at home, the copy I've got on my computer has the line through that. And I know you were all new and I know what a huge learning curve it is. And I asked if everybody, at the beginning, I was asking if everyone read the attached uh, bylaw. And there was a green, and it was passed unanimously. So when I did the committee, it was in, I followed the bylaw. I gave the reasons why there were changes. I ended up, Counselor Hunt, you brought back two committees. So if it's the will of council to change it, remove duties in the mirror, nothing I'm not used to. Counselor Sniker?
Why did it, is it not just an amendment to the bylaw? We're not rewriting the whole bylaw. Why did it?
It's a bylaw. It's what is scheduled attached. It's a bylaw. So it's three readings has to be given. So if council wants to change it, it will, admin will do it. It'll be on an extra two council meetings for first reading. Then we'll have to give second and third reading to it.
Uh, at this point, Madam Mayor Sewell, you're basically assuming that the committee appointments are good for the next, till next election. There is no?
There might be a change to deputy mayor. That's it.
Okay, so then now that stays.
Because nobody makes changes.
Understood.
In an election year with eight.
So.
Again, there's nothing written in stone that you can't change committees next year. There's no, there's no, nothing written, nothing in our bylaws. Want to go by bylaw. Because there's nothing in the bylaw that says we don't do committee reappointments in an election year, so. And they can be at any time of the year. It doesn't have to be at the end of the year or at the calendar year.
Because I've had, that's when I did this one. I had one committee requesting that a certain member don't, they want, who they wanted on the committee to work better with. Um, I'm not going public with all the list in here. Um, I have a hard job. I have to, the public entrusted me with mayor to who, what I'm doing. And then I have council disputing, which is your, your option. But I'm not changing, there's no need to change the committees. But I'm not changing, there's no need to change the committees. You all, I heard you at the last meeting, that hurt member first elected, one of them changed every year, then last year, last December, I heard how much it's for signing authority, all these excuse not to change. You know, so I'm in a, I'm in a position to do that. Plus I have limited people, councils to attend events. Counselor?
Um, I don't think this is a bash against you in any way, shape or form. I think that maybe for future committee, committee changes that we stay after this, that council meeting in December, we go over it together and just see exactly what we can come to an agreement with.
And you'll have changed by law.
Yeah.
Then I request that we do the first reading and change the bylaw. To put in a resolution of council.
You don't need a resolution, we're changing the law. I need to change the law. Okay, I mean, you work on wording or, or?
Still not.
Do we want, do you want this to vote? I can make a resolution regarding this. We, do you want this as a vote?
Well, the resolution could be that we direct admin to reword the bylaw.
Okay.
What number it is, I will bear.
So I'm going to put be resolved that council requests that item eight point one in the bylaw, bylaw number three, four, three, seven, seven uh, be changed to reflect that council resolution is required to adopt the annual committee appointments. And so with that resolution, when it's void and all voted on, if it's, uh, carried, then I would back the bylaw for first reading, a new bylaw for first reading.
Perfect, thank you. So Lisa just read the resolution as a. Ravamudra, please. Counselor Siker?
Second.
I don't have. Counselor Siker, second or?
Second.
Counselor Hunt? All in favor?
Aye.
No. Uh, opposed? I was, who was the, oh, counselor, it was the second there. Okay, that was on number seven point one. Okay, next item. Bylaw, Armistice Andrews, seven point two, Armistice Andrews Support for Canadian Economy Procurement Policy Amendment. Um, this was brought forward by council Maraki. Would you like to speak with me?
Uh, yeah, very briefly, uh, in view of the, uh, uh, the imminent trade war, we're gonna be entering our neighbor to the south. Uh, I felt it was appropriate that, uh, uh, that we should be buying, uh, or making every effort to buy Canadian products. Uh, I guess a good example of that would be, uh, truck tire manufacturers. Uh, there's currently three, uh, truck tire manufacturers in, operating in Canada. And you can buy truck tires from the United States, uh, just about anywhere. Uh, but what I'm proposing is that we, uh, you know, buy Canadian products and case of truck tires, buy the truck tires from, uh, Canadian manufacturers.
I want to thank you. I think that's an excellent idea for bringing that forward.
Yeah, this doesn't only apply to truck tires, it applies to toilet paper, light bulbs, uh, air filters, uh, uh, just a whole host of things. Uh, I think it's, uh, something that, uh, we should be doing. Uh, and I'm hoping that other RMs and perhaps the school visits falls into this, so.
Sounds good to me.
Well, I would ask, um, I always mention that I think we should have a press release done
Sure.
on this. The RMs can follow us, we'll be the leader in this.
Yep.
Okay, so whereas municipal purchases have economic, cultural and environmental impacts, whether intended or not, and whereas municipal procurement of the same of Canadian products and services captures those impacts and seeks to make intentional positive contributions to the Canadian economy through our procurement practices. Therefore, be it resolved that the council of the RM of St. Andrews shall endeavor to purchase products of Canada or Canadian made wherever possible. And furthermore, shall amend policy G E N eleven tendering procurement and disposal policy to reflect the by Canadian commitment in our procurement of goods and services practices. Could I have a mover, please? Um, counselor, Dornboss? Second by counselor Mondor, any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you again, Felicity, I would like you. Next idea, uh, next item is seven point three, policy G E N eleven tendering procurement and disposal policy. Um, has everyone read the attached addition to the policy? I see someone, you're reading it now.
No, I haven't read it.
Not yet.
You're reading it now?
No.
Oh, you're. Be resolved that council adopt policy G E N eleven tendering procurement and disposal policy add amendment. Could I have a mover, please? Second or? Counselor Mondor, all in favor?
Aye.
That is very. Approval accounts attached, be resolved that council approved February seventh, twenty twenty five check detail report as presented. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Siker, second or? Counselor Feeblecorn, any comments?
Counselor Siker? I have three questions, they're pretty general though. Uh, the first one, we covered, uh, the hub technology that was for when we had our reach and we are gearing up ours. Our own.
Right.
Definitely not.
That's all right.
Right? Uh, what is the Bruno Ketchment area study? What is that? I, I, I understand it's something to do with.
Come to council.
Yeah, that's the capital request that was brought, the previous budget, yeah.
It was in the budget for fifty thousand?
And my third one is, we have a check going to Winnipeg Metro Region for thirty one fifty, which is the renewal of the January to December twenty twenty five. I guess membership, is that what that would be?
Yeah, it's our contribution, all the RMs.
So my question to that is, since we are going to meet with the minister about the new plan that we're not too sure if we're in or out of, and we have to have a council discussion after we meet with minister, would we maybe not hang on to that check until we as council determine where we're going?
Well, we're still members of Winnipeg Metro Region. And if we opt out, it would be pro rata.
Also, Lisa. Uh, sorry, I think if I recall, that check is actually not, we're being members of the Metro Region. That is for the.
Fire reporting system, so.
Yeah, that was, we're required to be a part of.
Yeah.
For the year, for the coming year, January.
Well, it's a fire reporting system that was done by Winnipeg Metro that all the fire departments are in, and that's the annual cost for it.
Perfect. Okay, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Okay, so all those in favor? That is Carrie, no calls. Eight point two, February tenth addendum, be resolved that council approved the February tenth, twenty twenty five check detail report as presented. Could I have a mover, please? Doran Boss, second or? Counselor Mondor? Now, this is in and out. It's for the firemen that thought the fire tax paid to us and then the RM sent it to you.
Yeah.
It's not costing us anything.
Okay.
It's just an in and out.
Because I was just kind of, I didn't know what it was for.
I didn't know that. I asked.
I didn't either. Thanks.
So it's just an in and out. Um, all in favor? That is Carrie, all opposed? Notice motion. Where is the notice of motion to reconsider resolution number two oh two five oh oh one six was submitted at the January twenty, twenty twenty five regular meeting of council by counselor Feeblecorn. Now therefore be it resolved that council agrees to reconsider resolution number two oh two five oh oh one six and bring Gimli seniors resource council Inc. Annual financial support request back to the floor for resolution. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Doran Boss, seconded by counselor Feeblecorn. And counselor Feeblecorn gave your reasons why this is brought back at the last council meeting. Um, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Uh, counselors like you, you're both opposed? That matter is, uh, that matter then it's forward. Be resolved that council authorizes a financial contribution in the amount of four hundred and thirty four dollars to the Gimli Resource Center, Resource Council Inc., and that this amount be added to the twenty twenty five budget as part of our annual contribution to the center. Could I have a mover, please?
I'll move, a second.
Counselor Doran Boss, seconded by counselor Hunt. Discussion? Feeblecorn?
Um, sorry, is it for a particular amount or what, depending on the percentage of residents?
No, this service involve the information. I was not at that meeting. Um, I was at RRBC. Um, this has been an annual budget item. Um, it's a request, it's for our seniors in the north. And, well, anybody, but mainly serves our seniors in the north. That's a very small sum. It's, it's been a budget item for years. Um, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That matter is carried. Next item is the correspondence for action. Be resolved that council authorizes a donation in the amount of five hundred dollars to the Lord Selkirk Regional Comprehensive Secondary Schools Parents' Safe Grad Committee for the twenty twenty five saving grad event. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Doran Boss, second or? Counselor Feeblecorn, this is an annual, um, donation by the RM. Any further comments, questions? Everything is attached. All those in favor? Those opposed? Counselor Mondor opposed? That matters, Carrie. Be resolved that the RM of St. Andrews Scholarship Funds in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars be authorized for payment and submitted to the Lord Selkirk Regional Comprehensive School. This is again, is an annual scholarship, five, three, five hundred dollar scholarship. Could I have another?
So moved.
Okay, yeah, he doesn't see his. Counselor, seconded by counselor Siker. Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous and carried. Item ten point three, Lord Selkirk School Division Virtual Draft Budget. Be resolved that you authorize to attend the Lord Selkirk School Division Draft twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget presentation, February nineteenth, being held both virtually as well as in Selkirk and in the cafeteria at Lord Selkirk High School. Um, who would like to attend? I will be attending. Uh, counselor Siker? You'll be attending in person or virtually? Okay. Did you get an email direct on this? Okay, I responded, well, I got it that I'd be attending. Did you want to respond to your attending?
I did.
Okay.
I didn't expect to be paid, I was just going, I didn't think it going.
Yeah, could I have a mover, please? Counselor Mondor, second or? Counselor Doran Boss, all in favor? That is Carrie. Honorable Glenn Somard, Bill, oh, Bill Ford, it should be Bill forty two, I missed, Bill forty two, meaning February fourteenth, twenty twenty five in Winnipeg. Be resolved with Mayor Sewell and Counselor Siker, Feeblecorn, Doran Boss, Moir, Moore, and Deputy Mayor Marecki. Be authorized to attend a meeting with the honorable Glenn Somard on February fourteenth in Winnipeg. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Doran Boss, second or? Counselor Mondor, the emails were sent, um, everybody, I sent the instructions for the time, it's at one forty five. Um, I sent an email earlier on questions, everybody's good with that. Some of the questions, I'll bring them at the board meeting or twice. So that's good, I think. All in favor? Carrie, oh, there's no one opposed. Seven auction prize request, um, the Red River Basin Commission, their gala fundraiser, um, they have requested on March nineteenth, they heard the donation box, um, silent auction prizes to be donated. So the resolution read silent auctions, silent auction prizes to be provided. I don't believe we need, do we need a resolution for this?
Well, it got overlooked last year, just that we usually do with donation prizes, so, um, I just wanted to bring this forward.
Okay, thank you. So do we have a mover?
Sure.
Counselor Mondor, Rob Maraki, second. All in favor? Carrie? These were additions, our meeting, March thirteenth. Be resolved that be authorized to attend the our meeting being held March thirteenth, twenty twenty five in Stonewall. Who would like to attend that? The deputy mayor, Marecki, counselors, Feeblecorn, Siker, and Doran Boss. Be authorized to attend the March thirteenth, our meeting in Stonewall. Could I have a mover, please?
I'll move it.
Counselor Mondor, seconded by counselor Hunt. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that is Carrie. Ten point seven, interleague school division. Be resolved that be authorized to attend the interleague school division virtual public budget meeting held virtually on February twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. Who would like to attend? I'm not able to. It'll be, it's a visu. Is anybody able to attend? Okay, so then this will be filed for information. AK soccer, be resolved that deputy mayor Marecki be authorized to attend the AK soccer academy gala event held February twenty second, twenty twenty five in Winnipeg. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Doran Boss, second or? Deputy Member Marecki? All those in favor? That is Carrie. There's correspondence for information. Oops, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. I missed correspondence for information. Um, does anybody have any items to bring up on that? Carrie, it's in them. We've done the old unfinished business, new business. EMO annual exercise sufficient. Um, the attachment is attached that we, they approved our EMO. So thanks, Jordan, for that and Sherry as well and admin, whoever had a plan in there. Thank you. Whereas section three sixty five two of the municipal act provides that council may in any year designated the immediately preceding year or any earlier year as the year for which properties, the taxes in respect of which are in arrears for the year must be offered for sale by auction to recover the tax arrears and costs. What am I doing?
This is, this is some.
Was there, there was no resolution for the one. I jumped one. I guess that was just for information.
Yeah, looks like it. Sorry.
Sorry, no, and I didn't have a resolution. I'm doing it off paper. Okay, we're at item thirteen. No, thirteen point two. Therefore, be it resolved, given the year for which properties and arrears be offered for sale by auction being twenty twenty four, meaning all properties without sending taxes from the year twenty twenty three or prior. And further be resolved in accordance with section, in accordance with section three sixty three sub one of the municipal act, costs shall be the actual costs incurred for each parcel listed for tax sale. And further be it resolved, the tax sale be held November fifth, twenty twenty five at ten AM at the RM of St. Andrews Council Chamber. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Mondor, second or? Who did it? Counselor Marecki? Counselor Morecki. Any further discussion? All in favor? And team none opposed, that is Carrie. In camera. Be resolved that council live in camera at nine oh three PM to discuss matter better in preliminary stages and respecting which discussion in public could prejudice the municipality's ability to carry out its activities and negotiations as well as legal and personnel issues. And be it further resolved that the members of council agree to keep in confidence a matter that is discussed, a meeting that is close to the public under section one fifty two three, and that the committee decides to keep confidential until the matter is discussed at a meeting with the council or if a committee kept it in public. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Mondo, seconded by Counselor Dornbas. All in favor? Thank you, we are in camera. Thank.